Okay, thank you for your attendance today and welcome to members in the public gallery. Please can I ask the General Counsel David Hollis to announce the housekeeping arrangements?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I have your attention whilst I make a few housekeeping announcements? Please can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants, who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please may I request that recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Finally, although there are no longer any specific Covid safety measures to adhere to, individuals are very welcome to wear face covering within the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5:30, but may be extended at the discretion of the council. I shall adjourn the meeting at the appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Okay, item two on the agenda is apologies for absence. I have had apologies from Fran Belbin, Vicky Priestley, Lewis Chin Chin, Mike Drabble, Alison Norris, Martin Phipps, Marouf Ruff and Maliki Haby. Are there any other apologies? Okay, thank you. Item three on the agenda is exclusion of the press and public. There are no items on the agenda for the meeting where resolutions may be moved to exclude the press and public. Item four on the agenda is declarations of interest. This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. Does any member wish to declare an interest? I take that as a unanimous no on that one. Okay, now, item five on the agenda is public questions and petitions and other communications. I've got three items of relevance I want to bring up first of all. This, within the next few days, it's the anniversary of the passing of Queen Elizabeth II. And if you remember, at this time last year, we had a book of condolence in the foyer, which many members of council but also a very large number of members of the public signed. I've arranged that this book of condolence will be displayed digitally in the foyer for the next few days, which actually covers the Heritage Open Days of the town hall as well. And I thought it would be of interest to people visiting there to be able to see some of the messages of condolence. So, members, as well as members of the public, may well be interested in that. I also wish to report that last weekend I undertook a visit to our twin city of Bokum from the Friday to Sunday. It was highly successful in reviving many of the links between our two cities, which have many parallels, which have actually fallen into some abeyance over the last few years. They are very keen to revive the links between our universities, our chambers of commerce, our schools with language changes and so on. And officers are definitely working on a lot of positive outcomes that can come from this visit. And finally, on your desks, you should have a flyer. This is a bit of a publicity for, I'm going to do a bit of a sponsored walk a week on Friday for my main charity, St Luke's, to raise awareness of their main source of income is actually through donations to charity shops. And I'll be visiting a number of charity shops. Members particularly may be interested, and there's some rough timings on there, of meeting me at shops in their own ward and helping me rattle a bucket or two in front of the shops. I'd be very happy for members to join me on this and indeed walk with me on this next Friday. Okay, thank you very much for that. We now move on to public petitions and public questions. They can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance to be managed in a safe way at the meeting and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after the submission deadline shall be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion as Chair of the meeting. We've actually had one late question that actually probably arrived on time but was by post and didn't reach us until literally an hour ago. And I am going to allow that question in the end. For this meeting, we've had one petition and questions will be taken from 10 members of the public. I propose to deal with the public questions, you know, there's only one of them on the local plan last, as this will then butt against the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the local plan. A period of 60 minutes is allowed in total for ordinary petitions and public questions. And I suspect that we'll be able to get through that within the timescale this time. Can I call upon the Chief Executive to announce the petitions? And may I request that the petitioner be brief and keep the time limit of three minutes? May I also request that committee chairs keep within the maximum time limit of five minutes when responding to a petition or indeed questions later? Five minutes is a maximum, colleagues, not a target, okay? Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received a petition containing 22 signatures calling on the council to allow a front-seat passenger in a Hackney carriage taxi with a partition but no intercom. Mr Ibrah Hussain does not wish to address the council and it's recommended that this petition be referred to the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee. No other petitions.
councillor Orton, I presume you will provide a written answer to this? Okay, thank you. Questions for the public, right. Now we move on to questions. And the first question is from Abdul Rahim. Could you move to the microphone and ask your question, please?
Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to ask a question. I've recently received eight PCN notices while my vehicle was exempt. I'm from the 80s and I'm not familiar with new technology online, so my son had to go on each PCN notice and go and make appeal against it. And then I received a letter that they all cancelled. Two departments not working together, they need to share the information and stop wasting the paper and keep the trees. So if you want clean air, we need to protect the trees. So you're sending to loads of Hackney carriage taxi drivers, my brother here, Abdul, Shakur also got eight parking sites while his vehicle is still exempt. So the exemption vehicles are still being charged. So the departments need to work together, share the data among themselves, then we can protect the paper and protect the trees. Thank you much, appreciate it for allowing me.
Thank you very much for the question. And can I ask councillor Ben Miskel, as Chair of the Transport, Regeneration, Climate Policy Committee, to respond?
Thank you very much for your question. Whilst the general policy with regard to clean air in the city falls within my committee, the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee, the actual operational aspects of PCNs actually fall within the Waste and Street Seeing Committee. However, on this occasion, I think it's right that I do answer your question. And it's important because actually I've been seeking to work with the taxi trade in order to find solutions to many of the issues that you have been raising today. I understand that following investigations into the issues that you have raised, the PCNs have of course been cancelled, as you mentioned. You will of course have received a letter from us dated 23rd of August to confirm that position. It is right and proper that I stand here today and apologise that the PCNs were issued whilst your vehicle was exempt. And there are a small number of other taxi drivers who I am working with and with the taxi trade to deal with those issues that you've highlighted today. And I'd like to continue to speak to you and your representatives in the taxi trade to deal with any issues that you might be facing.
Thank you. The next question is from Fiona... Apologies, I said I would take that one last because it relates to the local plan. The next question is from Ibrah Hussain. Again, Ibrah is not here. And councillor Orton, as Chair of the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee, I'm assuming you will provide a written answer to this question.
Yeah, Lord Mayor, yes, I'm quite happy to do that. I should say that Ibrah's first question also relates partly to the issue that Ben has just addressed, but also it goes into the method for council scheme exemptions, which is properly a TRC matter. So perhaps he will answer that part of the question in writing to Ibrah. I will quite happily take up the rest.
Thank you. The next question is from Julie Perne.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Julie Perne and I'm Chair of Sheffield Labour Friends of Palestine. I will be very brief. Now that the council has admitted that it wrongly characterised my remarks about twinning with Nablus on the 20th of February as anti-Semitic, and did not mean to falsely imply that I was anti-Semitic, will the council now move forward with twinning arrangements with Nablus without any further unnecessary delay? Thank you.
I refer that question to the leader of the council, councillor Tom Hunt.
Thank you very much, Julie, for your question. Hi, Julie. As part of our desire as a council to develop an international strategy for the city council, we're undertaking a comprehensive review of all of our twin and sister cities, given that we have 14 formal relationships with different places around the world already. We receive numerous approaches each year and given our limited resources, both from a staffing and from a budget perspective, we are seeking now to establish a framework by which all new approaches can be properly considered. This will mean that aspects such as the similarities between each location, pre-existing relationships with those places, economic ties, the expectations from both sides, and also the likely benefits of participation, along with any resource implications, can be properly considered as part of that decision-making framework. A draft framework has been prepared and it's currently being reviewed. And each of the three political parties' groups is going to have a chance to review that to make sure that as we proceed with this, we do so in a cross-party manner. It's the intention to consider the Nablus approach once that framework has been agreed and is in place by the end of this year.
You know that that has already been done, haven't you?
Okay, thank you. It's not a debate, that is the answer, and that is the end of that. Right, the next three questions all relate to a similar topic and all will be referred to councillor Ben Miskel. I think it's appropriate that I'll go to ask all three questions to be put and then Ben to provide the answer to save repetition. So can I call upon Viv Lockwood to ask the first question?
Thank you, Chair. May I say that I'm here representing the Manicross Neighbourhood Group. Our 451 members live predominantly in the southern part of the Nether Edge and Sherrill Ward and in Dejoin in Eclesall Ward. The introduction of the Nether Edge Active Neighbourhood Scheme was meant to make changes to streets, and I quote, "creating a safer, cleaner and quieter environment for local residents and businesses to enjoy", unquote. It's actually done just the reverse by closing Archelane with consequential hugely increased congestion, traffic chaos everywhere and pollution levels soaring. Given that accidents and air quality were never thought important enough even to evaluate when the scheme was first implemented, does the council agree with the overwhelming number of local residents that it should now be brought to an end and that a thorough assessment be undertaken into how such an ill-thought-out and badly-delivered scheme ever saw the light of day in the first place? And in doing so, make a proper examination, as we have done, into the highly questionable data presented to us used to justify it? Thank you.
Thank you, Viv Lockwood. The second question on this topic is from Mohammed Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we understand that on 20th of September, the same issue, the Archelane active travel, is going to be discussed at the Transport Committee. We expected that by now, the data from the trial period and the perception data will be published. But I am astonished to know that the data hasn't been published yet. It means that this will not give chance to public to comment on it. And in the past, this is not the only first occasion when the officials try to either mislead or keep the information hidden. By misleading, I think that will be, a very wrong decision will be made by the committee. In the beginning, we understand that the public will be properly consulted. But they said the six months, they do the six months, they will be able to consult the public properly. After a few months, the people said the consultation, either only few people knew too much about the consultation, or only the vast majority didn't know about the consultation. The local council pushed for a consultation, a couple of sessions, which were carried out. But officials promised they will come back by October 2022 with the consultation results, which did not happen. Can I ask, due to all these flawed consultations, all too meaningless consultations, can I request that this report is withdrawn until the public is given full chance to comment on the consultation results? So therefore, the committee will be able to reach to a final decision. And I hope the committee will listen to the public, if they have already listened and worked very closely with the business community on the right route. And if they didn't, on this occasion, this will be a contempt to the public and the local residents. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And can I now ask Marion Gerson to ask the third question on this topic?
Lord Mayor, members of the council, I'm asking about the same issue. In the 2021 consultation for this neighbourhood, five desired outcomes were identified. The third of those was improved air quality. But many of us, including myself, live in residential streets that have been affected by a huge increase in traffic pollution since Archelane and Little London Road were closed. In spite of our asking, no attempt was made to measure air quality on our roads directly. There are some monitoring stations on Abidale Road and also Osborne Road and Montgomery Road that would be useful in giving some indication of the consequences of the closures. I've asked traffic officers from Connecting Sheffield, but they haven't ported on these data and they didn't respond to my request in July to know what it was. Instead, I was appointed to an interactive map on the council's website, which should have been useful, except that it hadn't been updated since 2021, which of course is completely useless. I understand that since sending in my question, it has been agreed that this map will be updated. So my question now is, given its relevance, why didn't the officers release the data much earlier? Thank you.
Thank you for those three questions. And I now call upon councillor Ben Miskel, who's Chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to respond.
Thank you very much to Viv, Mohammed and Marion for taking time to come here and ask you a question today. A decision, of course, will shortly be taken on the scheme, as you know, the next Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee, which is coming up in a few weeks' time. As you know, Sheffield City Council is developing an active travel network and working to make Sheffield a better place to live, not least as a response to the climate emergency as declared by this council in February 2019. Of course, the consequence of that declaration is that it is essential that we reduce our carbon emissions across the city if we're to tackle climate change whilst enabling our economy to grow. We also, of course, have a responsibility to help make communities safer places to live, including ensuring that the most vulnerable and children are kept safe. But let me answer your question about data directly, because you raised a very important one. The council has been collecting data on the Nether Edge Active Neighbourhood Scheme over the last 12 months. And this has included resident, visitor and business attitudes to the scheme, as well as traffic count, speed and journey time data collected six and then 12 months after the scheme was implemented. Much of the traffic data collected after six months has been shared, as you say, via the Connecting Sheffield website. Alongside other members of my committee, I have raised the issue of ensuring that relevant monitoring data, including that collected from existing monitoring stations, is placed in the public domain. And we have had assurance in cross-party briefings that this will be done prior to our meeting. This is now due to be uploaded onto the website by the end of the week, so you should be able to see that by the end of the week. As Chair of the committee, I've been working very closely with your local councillors, Ibrah and the Gap Facherat, to make sure that we make the right decision when it comes to this particular scheme in Nether Edge. And I would encourage you to attend the committee when we do make this decision later on in the month. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from Annie Ogara.
Thank you. On July the 14th, a Sheffield coalition made up of the city's Trades Council, Palestine Solidarity, Labour Friends of Palestine and Kairos groups, sent a formal letter, our first official communication with the council, to every member of the council and to the leader, Tom Hunt. We specifically asked him to reply. The letter concerned the government's proposed legislation entitled "Economic Activity of Public Bodies (Overseas Matters)" known as the Anti-Boycott Bill. This bill is anti-democratic. It limits the abilities of public bodies to make ethical choices about spending and investment that reflect widespread public support for human rights, climate goals and international law. It violates the rights of individual pension holders to invest their pensions in line with their values. It gags individual councillors from expressing sincerely held views unless these fit in with the government's agenda. The bill applies very widely from climate change issues to human rights and international law. Despite its serious implication for Sheffield City Council and for the citizens of Sheffield, we have received no reply, even though a response was promised on July the 17th and a reminder of this promise has been sent. When will Tom Hunt reply on behalf of the council he now leads? And I ask this question not for myself, but on behalf of the coalition.
Thank you for that question. And now I ask councillor Tom Hunt, leader of the council, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Annie, for coming and asking the question and thank you for your letter. I apologise for the delay. It is being prepared and will be sent to you. Part of the delay is because the bill that we were talking about here is currently being considered still by parliamentarians. At the second reading of the bill in the House of Commons in July, my party voted against the bill. The bill is now at committee stage and Parliament's just gone back before a third reading in the Commons will take place and then further stages in the Lords. Labour is clear that all public bodies must act without bias or selectivity when making ethical decisions on procurement and investment. However, we are concerned that the bill, as you mentioned, risks significantly undermining support for groups around the world who face persecution, for example, the Uighurs. We have asked the government to bring forward alternative proposals because the bill in its current form places unprecedented restrictions on public bodies, on the ability of public bodies to express a view on policy. And as you've mentioned, it has potential widespread and negative implications for local government pension funds and is likely to be subject to repeated and extended legal challenge. I'll set all of that out in my reply to you, which is on its way to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from Abe Hussain.
Mr Hussain, can I start by thanking the members of this chamber for providing me this opportunity to ask my question? They say that death and taxes are the most definite things in life. Death is a very somber moment, a sensitive moment, and an emotional moment for any family. So it's quite alarming that I bring this issue to you, having been informed that elected members and officers have been aware of this for quite some time. You will know that burial facilities across Sheffield are depleting at a very rapid rate, a very alarming rate. And it's more exasperated for the Muslim community. I am informed that in the deprived areas of Sheffield, where there are concentration of cemeteries for the Muslim community, there's less than two years' worth... where there are concentration of cemeteries for the Muslim community, there's less than two years' worth of land left. And in the most affluent areas, there are less than four to five years of land left. Now, I know across the city, in consultation during the local plan that closed on the 20th of February, a number of representations have been made. And I'm told by elected members that officers have repeatedly promised that this would be in the local development plan. When will it come into the developed plan? When will we see it? And please, look into your emotion. Imagine turning up to bury a loved one and finding that there's no space. We have to have some foresight into one of what I believe is the most sensitive issues that we could be facing. So my question in short is, could the Sheffield City Council provide an update on what progress has been made in identifying new sites for burial? I'm particularly aware of private sector land that was former public land lying barren in parts of Sheffield that could be used for this. And what timescales do we have to ensure that adequate provision is made for not only the Muslim community, but all communities? Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question, and I call upon councillor Richard Williams, the Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, to respond.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr Hattain, for coming in today, asking your question and for putting the question in the first place. Buried and Services has literally this month appointed a temporary officer to help develop the burial, cremation and cemetery strategy for the whole city. Through consultation, this strategy will lay out the council's aspirations for service over the next five to 10 years, including what burial provision is provided. This officer will take the lead liaising with Property Services to establish what land may be available for cemetery development. The officer will have quarterly meetings with appropriate and interested elected members and will report directly progress to the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, which you can, of course, attend or watch on the webcast. In addition, we have been investigating the possibility of expanding one of the existing cemeteries in the Tinsley-Darnell area. Unfortunately, on close inspection and investigation, the land which might have been available to purchase next to the Tinsley Cemetery proved to be completely unsuitable as burial land. We are therefore exploring what other land options may be available in this area. Except, to bring you up to speed, except for Tinsley Cemetery, which is now closed for new burials, we believe that there is around five years of available burial space before capacity is reached in some cemeteries and up to 30 years in others. I can only stress to you that this is a priority for our committee, and that's why we're putting extra resources in. I acknowledge your notes about sensitive, it is a sensitive issue for the whole of the community of Sheffield. And I'd be more than happy to have a regular briefing session with you if that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I'm now going to ask Mrs Bagnall to ask her questions. This is the one I always referred to earlier that came by post and just came to light very recently, but Mrs Bagnall.
Thank you. My name's Linda Walker from Chelmsford. Our buses, 76A, 76A, we had a petition about it because we only get five buses a day. But since TM took it over, we only get three buses a day. Like today, two were missing this morning, two yesterday morning. Out of 55 journeys, 22 was missing. We rely on that bus for doctors, shopping, chemists, you name it, we rely on it. And it's just not good enough. But what we're getting at the moment is just a couple of buses a day when they turn up. So we'd like something doing about it, anything would be better than what it is now. It runs fine, well-staged, college for texting it. We had it every day, we only had five buses, but better than nothing. But we need council to sort it out as quick as possible because I had a appointment to doctors last week, couldn't get to it, and it's vital that I have these tests done. So if you would, please contemplate getting us a nice bus route. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask councillor Ben Miskill, Chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to respond to that specifically on the buses. You did in your letter raise a couple of other points that I don't think we've had time to get a response to, but as Deputy Leader of the council in that capacity, I think Ben may also be able to respond as well. I'm handing that over to you, councillor Miskill.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, Mrs Bagnall, for coming along to the meeting today and the letter that you sent. As the Lord Mayor has said, unfortunately, it seems that your letter and question was delayed in the post. Your question that as sent to us did, of course, raise many questions for the council, and we will, as the Lord Mayor says, make sure that you get a full response. It raised some interesting questions about the moor market and artificial plants, and I'll make sure that you get a response to that as well. You do, however, raise some really important questions about buses, which you've articulated today. And I do agree with you about the poor quality service that many people in our city have received since deregulation of our bus services. South Yorkshire's Mayor Oliver Copard has launched a campaign for a fair bus deal, and his campaign highlights that 42% of our bus services have been cut due to government funding cuts over the past 10 years. We do, of course, continue to work with Oliver, as well as Shadow Transport Secretary Louise Haig, to demand better for Sheffield and to demand better bus services for Sheffield. Like me, you can join Oliver's campaign online. You know, thank you very much to Mrs Bagnall for bringing your question today. And of course, we'll make sure that you get a full response to the other matters that you raised in your written question.
Thank you. I had received another group of questions from Michael Mullin that related to non-ionising radiation risks. These were rather repetitious of a series of questions that were answered at the last full council meeting. And therefore, under the provisions of the Council Procedure Rule 15.1E, subclause four, and on the advice of the monitoring officer, they are deemed to be matters of an irrelevant, repetitious, defamatory, frivolous or offensive nature or general misuse of the opportunity for answering, asking public questions, as they maintain an ongoing dialogue on a matter that has been substantially answered by the council on which the council has made its position clear. That's why they were ruled out of order in this occasion. Right, we now move to the final question, which, as I said before, actually relates to the next item on the agenda, local plan. So can I ask Fiona Heinsohn to come to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I'm here today representing residents of the Springwell Estate. So to save 100 people actually getting up and asking questions. So from the last strategy meeting, there were quite a few of them submitted. There are obviously a few people in the public gallery today, but a lot of people are unable to attend due to the timing of the meetings, they're always weekdays, 2pm, they can't get their paid time off to come. So we just want you to appreciate that many of us here today are doing this at our own expense because our campaign to save Springwell Field means that much to us. But I'm sure the strength of feeling around the draft local plan is already recognised through the fact that you have already had a 4,000-plus signature petition. You've had objections already raised by the residents, the local businesses, our councillors and our MP. So before councillors take a vote on the report that was endorsed at the Strategy and Resources Meeting on the 2nd of August, there are a few questions and issues that we'd just like to highlight for your consideration and formally request again the removal of SE SO3, so the land off Eckington Way, as per the motion that was submitted on the 20th of February as being unsuitable for the proposed development and removal from the draft local plan. The first point that we just wanted to raise was a formal FOI request was made to councillor Hunt following the Strategy and Resourcing Meeting that I myself attended. As the original questions posed at that meeting were not responded to until the 17th of August, the responses then were not in the adequate level of detail that had been requested. And that FOI response, we confirmed, will not be provided until the 15th of September, which is too late for today's meeting. But I just wanted to highlight some of the questions that were on there. The first question being, how did the Mosbury Ward councillors manage to have their proposed site considered suitable by local planners removed before the draft plan was made public? The response that we got to the initial question was concerns were raised about social cohesion. I don't actually know what that means, what were the specific objections? And because obviously they were deemed sufficient enough to rule that from behind closed doors. From the site selection methodology, most sites in private ownership were ruled out, and this site, from your professional judgement, was deemed the most suitable to sufficiently separate from sensitive users nearby due to employment uses taking place. So why were sites such as, say, the Norton Aerodrome ruled out? Did this meet the National Planning Policy Framework guidance? This site does have direct access to a strategic road, which is actually a dual carriageway. It has accessible utilities, and this would make just as good quality provision for the GRT community housing. The SEC planners have also confirmed in their response to us that the site hasn't actually been measured. The report says the gross site is 6.8 hectares. Our own measurements obtained are considerably less with the requirements for the environmental buffers, the power lines that bisect the field, and your admission that building beneath them might not even be possible. There's also no development near to the northern boundary edge or western slopes near Eckington Way, all of which significantly shrink the developable land. So those were just some of the questions that we're still waiting for the FOI requests on. But it just brings me on to our key question today, which is why do Sheffield council never learn from their mistakes? Some specific examples, The Tree Fell In. So there was an independent review. It condemned and said that there was strategic leadership failure and being dishonest. The Sheffield council didn't listen to the protesters, the strength of feeling, and now, after the event, they're making their apologies. Abbey Glen, another site where the council approved industrial use, the exact same as what they're promising for this proposed site, yet now you're having to deal with all the resident objections around the noise and disruption because it's not what you expected when you approved it. So that's just, again, another example of you asking for forgiveness after the event. You're pushing decisions that you feel are best for the people, but you never do it with adequate consultation. So an example of that, the GRT community site at Tinsley. So Huntsman's Gardens, a prime example where you used funding for a purpose-built site that the GRT community didn't even want. It closed down and you ran it at a significant loss. At the February LAC that was made our request, you mentioned that you'd contacted the Showmans Guild, but we wanted to know, have you had their confirmation from the GRT travelling showpeople that this site is adequate for them and actually meets all their needs with the amendments that are going to be needed? Have they actually commented on the detail around the reduced developable site? The provisions for privacy, as they will require just as much as we do as residents. And the example of that is the site at Ullie in Rotherham, where it's gated access, it's got maturity coverage. At our site, we have a gas pipe that runs across the field, which even in 2020, residents who were purchasing property were being told there'd be no development on that field because of that reason. There's the high voltage pylons that need 24/7 national grid access. And, you know, how do they feel about the construction works that are being proposed from the Brinsworth line where they're going to be upgrading it to 400 KV upgrade? And you never seem to look at the wider picture. So you've approved individual years' worth of silo projects. If you look at all the development in our area, you've done absolutely nothing to change the transport infrastructure. You've recognised it as a problem, but you've brushed it aside as the proposed development, you say, will have minimal impact. So what you're doing is you're pouring on top of an already existing problem, and that's always been part of our key objections. What we would have expected is that the draft local plan actually dealt with transport issues. But all you do is you propose a commitment to do another review in 2024 for which you have given us no solutions to solve our already heavy traffic congestion problems. And just finally, the whole process of the public consultation is disputed. The result had already been predetermined when the draft was issued. It appears that the meeting in December 2022, when councillors voted for the draft plan to be made public, also appears to mark the beginning of the Regulation 19 stage of planning where significant changes to the draft local plan are no longer possible. We've gone through a process where we had a LAC meeting. The presentation was given to the residents, which we've seen the presentation again at the strategic meeting in August. It's not changed despite the petition and the objections other than a report that says you will address it at planning stages. So any removal, no matter how flawed around this specific site development and the provision of the GRT housing would be classed as a major amendment. And because you've got no Plan B to fall back on at this stage, then you don't meet your objective of submitting a local plan to government, which, let's face it, is already years late. But you can tick your box to say it's been submitted, and all the problems associated with it would just get kicked down the line. As the Green Party said, who support this plan as a need for the proposed development, we know we're going to be tarmacming over an arable field where, in the report, it says it's not quality land, yet we've grown crops there annually for at least the last 65 years. We've got the wildlife of Eckington Way, which includes four recorded species of birds living on the field on the RSPB red list. But you state, if it's not here, it has to be elsewhere in the city. So this support is based on the planning officer professional judgment and their clear advice. The same planners who were at that meeting in February admitted they'd not actually visited the site, and that will be verified by all of the residents that are here today before this draft plan became public. It was a desktop exercise for site suitability. You haven't measured it because it's not a requirement. You confirm now that you've visited, although you can't give us any dates, which I find astounding because as professionals, are you not using things like Outlook? You wouldn't have a calendar note of something that's so important after all the objections that you've received around this topic. So if this recommended draft plan goes ahead today, then as a panel, we have created timeline documents in readiness of any public inquiry where the lack of Sheffield council being open and honest with us as evidence will be clearly evidenced. So we would ask that today you do the right thing by your own core values, that you vote that the land of Eckington Way is unsuitable for development, and this element is removed from the draft local plan. Thank you.
Thank you for those very eloquently expressed questions, and you can see they were appreciated by members of the council. I'm now going to call upon the leader to respond, councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much, Fiona, for coming today and asking your questions, and thank you for the FOI request. And I do appreciate you coming here today. I know, you know, as you've said eloquently, as the Lord Mayor referred to, that it's not easy for you to come, all of you to come, take time out to come and participate in a meeting like this. So I am very grateful for you to do that because we can only do our job if we're, you know, in dialogue with the public. You've asked lots of detailed questions today, but also by email, and a detailed response is being prepared for that FOI request that you've made. It contains a lot of information, particularly about the site selection process, which you've asked about. I won't read all of that out today because there are pages of documents. But it will be sent to you, and if other people would like to...
Excuse me, will you let the leader of the council reply? And he might address your point in a minute. And I'm not going to allow her back and forth. And I'm not going to allow a back and forward debate on this. It's a question that's been eloquently asked. A reply will be given. Councillor Hunt, continue please without interruption.
All FOI requests, the answers provided are made available in the normal way. So it will be available and you'll get a chance to see all of those documents. I do want to respond, we're about to discuss the local plan in a minute. So you, you know, hopefully you'll be able to hear, stay around and hear the debate. But I do want to respond to a couple of points before the debate that you've made, particularly about the consultation. The consultation process that was carried out in the start of this year follows a consultation process about sites that took place in 2020. All of the process of consultation for the local plan development has complied with national planning regulations and the Statement of Community Involvement, which is a document that sets out how the council will consult on the local plan. The site was visited by an officer from the strategic planning team prior to the draft Sheffield plan being brought forward. The relevant case officer and the head of planning have visited sites since the consultation period ended on the 20th of February.
Please, please allow the leader to respond. It isn't, it isn't helpful for the interruptions. And we're going to have a full debate on this immediately following the questions where members will be able to elucidate many of the points that you're trying to raise there in the debate. It isn't helpful to have these interruptions. Councillor Hunt.
As you've seen from the report that went to the Strategy and Resources Committee last month, the council does consider that the land at Eckington Way is a suitable site for the uses that are proposed. I know that there are differences of opinion on that. And that is, this is part of the democratic process, where everyone is able to have their say. Nothing about this process has been predetermined, including the vote that we're just about to have in the next hour or so. The plan has been shaped by listening to members of the public and by cross-party elected members of the working group that has worked with officers to develop this local plan over several years. It is a better plan for it. And I want to thank everyone who submitted their views as part of the consultation process. If the plan is submitted for examination today and subsequently if it is adopted by this city council, then it will be periodically reviewed. It will give us a development framework for the city. But of course, we would make sure that it's reviewed at regular intervals. And any planning applications that come forward in the future, if they do, for any sites in the local plan, would be subject to the usual planning processes, which means that every resident, business, neighbour in the area will be able to have their say about the planning application that comes forward. And in the planning process, traffic, air pollution, biodiversity issues that have been raised would be properly considered as they are through, when any planning application comes in. We're just about to debate what happens with the draft local plan. So you can, hopefully we'll stay around and see what we decide as a city council. But I just want to say thank you for coming. The FOI request is being, the answers are being prepared and they will be sent to you. If anyone else would like to see it, if Fiona is happy for that to be shared, then we can do that. But the answers will be made available. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes that item of business, but we're going to move straight into item number six on the agenda, which is the consultation responses and the publication draft of the Sheffield local plan, which clearly is what we've already started talking about. This item of business is to approve responses to the representations received on the publication of the draft Sheffield local plan and to give approval for the plan and associated submission documents to be submitted to the government for public examination. A report of the executive director, City Futures, has been published with the agenda for this meeting. And the report contains recommendations for the council to consider. There is a motion to approve the recommendations in the report and there are two proposed amendments to consider. The motion will be moved and seconded and then the mover and seconder of each amendment will speak. The matter will then be debated. The document containing the motion and the amendments, lettered A and B, was circulated by email to all members of the council yesterday and has been published on the website with the agenda for this meeting. Paper copies have been circulated in the council chamber. Now normally, there is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for debates on motions. But given the importance of this and the amount of interest, I am proposing that we extend that debate, in this instance, to 45 minutes. Deputy, Deputy Lord Mayor?
Seconded.
Is that agreed to extend it to 45 minutes? Can I just have a quick show of hands to acknowledge that? I'm taking that that is agreed. The, the debate will be for 45 minutes. Right, to start the debate, may I call upon councillor Tom Hunt to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This plan is a plan to help shape the future of Sheffield. It's a plan for the people of Sheffield. It's been hard work and it has involved hard decisions for lots of us. I'd like to thank planning officers for their hard work over many years to get us to this point. And I'd like to pay particular thanks to all of the cross-party working group members from Labour, from the Greens and from the Liberal Democrats, who have worked hard to steward the plan through its different stages. That work has been underpinned by a cross-party desire to ensure that there are no more delays. And throughout that cross-party effort, we have listened to people across Sheffield to shape the plan. In 2015 and in 2020, consultations were run about where people would prefer to see development. The messages came back loud and clear. A priority for brownfield sites, protect the green belt. That's what this local plan does. We have listened to investors who want to invest in our city, but want to see a clear development plan. Businesses and investors, like residents, want certainty about where development can take place. That's what this plan will provide. We have listened to people who have raised concerns about traffic and air pollution measures. They are legitimate concerns and any future planning applications will take them into consideration. We have listened to people in all of our communities who have told us that they are worried about where their children and their grandchildren are going to live. We need housing for older people to meet their changing needs. We have a shortage of all types of housing. This plan must now kickstart sustainable house building across the city. We have listened to the people of Sheffield who are proud of their city, proud of our neighbourhoods, proud of our green spaces, proud of our friendliness, proud to be a city of sanctuary. It is by listening that this citywide plan has been developed. It sets out how we will provide new homes, new jobs and new opportunities to grow and to help Sheffield realise its potential. Delaying today would put the green belt at risk, weaken our ability to decide what gets built where and risk undermining confidence in the city. No more delay. It's not just me saying that. In 2021, the Liberal Dem leader wisely said, not having an agreed plan is putting our green areas at risk and could impact the future prosperity of the city. That same year, councillor Johnson, the Green leader, highlighted concerns that not having a local plan weakened our ability to refuse substandard planning applications. I agree 100%. We are a great city, a city on the up. This plan will help us to become an even better city to live, to work and to grow up in. I commend the plan and I look forward to seeing it progress in this same cross-party spirit with which it's been developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Now may I call upon councillors here and ask to second the motion. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, first of all, I would like to thank officers, cross-party members, stakeholders and residents for all the hard work and input into the draft local plan. This plan is for Sheffielders, is for our future generations. Local people have told us what's important to them and it's about time that we listen and level up. Across this chamber, we should all be proud to embrace this aspiring plan and connect with our neighbourhoods. This plan proposes to support and support marginalised communities and tackle inequalities and injustices faced by some we shouldn't ignore this. Lord Mayor, the people have spoken. Our vision is for Sheffield to be economically stronger, fairer, more inclusive and a sustainable city with thriving neighbourhoods and a distinct urban and rural identity. Wars like mine are in desperate need of more social and affordable homes. The local plan will help towards this. The local plan brings together proposals around housing, environment, development, economic growth and transport. Looking at these as one big picture, addressing the challenges of how they each impact the other and how they, how they will bring benefits for everyone in Sheffield. Unlike the failings of the Tory government, which have decimated cities across the country. Lord Mayor, this plan will give new energy to the steel city and put us on the map. I'm immensely proud to support this plan and second the motion. Let's all get behind it and create a stronger and brighter future for us all. We owe this to the people of Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you. Now may I call upon councillor Joe Orton to move amendment A. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I come to the amendment, before my speech starts, I, I, I wish to raise on a point of order a challenge to the decision not to accept the amendment that we tabled regarding the Eckington Way site for the benefit of members of the public. We submitted two amendments here, but one on Eckington Way was rejected. I would like an explanation of why that was and to challenge that decision, particularly with, with regard to the fact that there has been an enormous, there's been a consultation, there's been enormous public opposition to, to that site. And then how is this to be decided by members democratically, except by a vote at a meeting such as this? If that consultation is not to be seen as a juggernaut that is going to run you over in the next 10 seconds unless you convince it in detail to take a completely different course? I mean, that is, that is, that's, that's how this process is feeling, I think, to many of us here. As an unstoppable juggernaut, not a genuine consultation, unless we're allowed to vote at this meeting. So that is my challenge. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the general counsel, David Hollis, to respond to that and give the legal reasons why that amendment wasn't allowed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. That specific amendment, which was to remove the Eckington Way site, meant that the main recommendation is that the council submit the draft local plan to government for inspection. In order to be able to submit it to government, it must meet the legal test of soundness, which includes a strategy to meet assessed need. There is an assessed need for travellers, in particular showpeople, that we must meet. The amendment amounted to a major change and would result in a lack of provision for a traveller site that would mean that the local plan would not meet the assessed need and therefore not be legally sound. The amendment would make a substantive motion not implementable in that it would be requiring submission of a plan to government that could not be lawfully submitted.
Thank you. I, no, I, we've had a challenge, we've had the answer, I accept the answer. We're now going to move on to the amendment A. You will get your chance to speak during the debate. Councillor Orton, you have, you have got your two minutes to speak.
Before I start.
Councillor Orton, allow me to finish. You have got two minutes to speak on amendment A.
Before I start on amendment A, Lord Mayor, I have a procedural challenge relating to amendment A as well, if I may.
Right, let's have the procedural challenge on that.
So this relates to the question of the Equality Impact Assessment and the fact that, and it has been acknowledged, I think, by officers at the S and R meeting, that there was a deficiency in the assessment regarding the employment opportunities that the proposal on hot food takeaways will take away, particularly from ethnic minority members, residents of the city. I think we all realise, if any of us who've bought the occasional takeaway will know, that most of the people working those businesses and running those businesses are ethnic minorities. And therefore, this policy has a material economic disadvantage effect on them and the assessment didn't properly address that. Now, we don't have a fresh assessment. What we have is some narrative in the covering report.
Excuse me, is that a point of order?
We don't really know.
One at a time. I'm just seeing if councillor Turpin has a point of order. And if it is a point of order, what number? You have to say what constitutional point of order it is.
Lord Mayor, I didn't even know they had numbers. The point of order I want to...
Stand up please.
I didn't even know they had numbers, I'm afraid, Lord Mayor. But the point of order I'd like to raise is that I believe that councillor Orton is stereotyping, which I'm, I'm calling racism.
I don't want the full 45 minutes to be eaten up on procedural motions and various things. I would like that, you've raised a point. Have you finished raising your point? And can I ask for clarification on that?
Not, not quite. I, I wish to, I, I wish to challenge that the information we've been given is adequate on the question that I've raised regarding the economic disadvantage, particularly that it says in the covering report, look, we don't really know how many ethnic minority people run fast food takeaways. And therefore, we don't, that's sufficient consideration. And I suggest precisely because we don't know, we've not given it due regard, that we have a legal duty to do. And therefore, not passing this amendment would leave us with an unlawful proposal.
Councillor Rooney, I've been, I've been waiting for your first challenge to be a right of order.
I'm actually trying to be helpful. The people in the gallery have not come to listen to councillor Orton's obsession with technicalities and this bizarre desire that he's got to allow our children to eat themselves into obesity.
Councillor Rooney, I think...
I would like to suggest that whatever time councillor Orton has just spent on that nonsense, that it's actually added back on to the 45 minutes of the people...
Thank, thank, thank you. The point I made is I don't want any more of this debate time eaten by procedures. But Dave, David Hollis, general counsel, can you respond to that point succinctly?
As succinctly as I can. The Equality Act requires the council have due regard to certain requirements placed on it via the legislation. I'll add lib whilst I'm bringing my screen back up. An equality impact assessment is just one tool to do that and it's not a legal requirement. However, the council has prepared an equality impact assessment in relation of this, which is a living document and is updated as circumstances change or as new information comes to light, which is as it should be. The various reports that have been before members today draw out all the relevant information in relation to the duty as informed by that EIA. And the updated information is outlined in the report by council. So all the relevant information drawn from the EIA is before members making the decision to allow them to properly consider the matter with regard to the duty that is placed on the council under the Equality Act. The council does not have information on the ethnic background of hot food takeaway owners, so cannot say for certain that there will be an adverse impact, but the potential is recognised. The legal duty is only to have due regard to the information that is available. It does not require an information-seeking duty. So I'm satisfied that there is relevant information before members from all the information that is there, that allows them to make a decision with having due regard in relation to the equality duty.
Thank you. Councillor Orton, can we now get on with the debate proper? We are now moving for two minutes amendment A.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This debate, thank you, Lord Mayor. This debate is at heart of whether or not well-intentioned, middle-class people like ourselves in the chamber are so supremely wise, trustworthy and sanctimonious that we ought to be taking away other people's choices of what they can eat and taking away parents' choices of what their children might eat. I myself have allowed my children to eat chips and it would be hypocrite of me to stop any other parent doing the same. It's not about providing better choices, no. If this policy denies you a hot takeaway... If this policy denies you a hot takeaway meal from a family business serving interesting ethnic dishes made from fresh ingredients, well, you've still got McDonald's, you still have ultra-processed snacks and fizzy drinks from the corner shop, you still have ultra-processed ready meals from the meat supermarket. That is where this policy is driving people. There is a lot of research, sure, flimsy research, but there's a lot of it, none of it considers what alternatives people will most likely use instead and the fact that most of those alternatives are likely to be worse. That is the problem when you take away people's choices, you really have no idea how much harm you are doing.
Councillor Sanger, can you second the motion, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd obviously like to thank my colleagues on the all-party working group who've spent a lot of time on the plan and I would like, on behalf of my group, express our thanks to all the planning officers involved in this difficult process that's taken many, many years. The problem we have with NC12 is it is a blunt tool. We are saying that the only way to tackle childhood obesity is to stop the choice of everybody else. The point is, what are the national dishes of this country? Whether you think it's fish and chips or whether you think it's chicken tikka masala, they're both dishes that have been brought in by immigrant communities. It's quite clear the council hasn't done the research in terms of who works in hot food takeaways, it hasn't looked at the impact in terms of the multicultural city that we want to live in, that councillor Tom Hunt eloquently expressed in introducing this motion. We want a vibrant city that reflects food options from around the world, we want to give those choices to adults, adults should have choices. I'm speaking particularly in terms of students in my ward who regularly use takeaways in Brimhill, I know other students who use takeaways in the hot food outlets in the city centre. Why should we stop that? Just because this is the only tool the council can think of to tackle the challenge of childhood obesity, which is a national problem that the city has, we accept that, but this is the wrong tool. In terms of planning policy, we should be about choice and hot food takeaways, having new hot food takeaways across the city should be something we should have. So with that, Lord Mayor, I move this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to the second amendment and can I call upon councillor Mary Leeds to move amendment B. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, can I thank all the officers, past and present, who've been involved in the development of the local plan? It's been a mammoth task that they've undertaken. I'd also like to thank the elected members across the chamber, all who've been involved in its development as well, and particularly those individual councillors who've had particular responsibility for seeing it through. And I'm going back now to councillor Jack Scott, Julie Doore, who went down to government and got concessions, Mazarick Bell, Julie Grocott and now Ben Miskel. I think they've made a significant contribution in protecting the green belt and ensuring that we get the housing we want. And lastly, I'd like to thank all the people of Sheffield who have also contributed to the local plan in submitting their views. Approving this plan today will ensure that prosperity and wellbeing of Sheffield for the future, which all of us here today would wish to see. Without the plan, planning control could easily slip out of the council's control, as we know to our city's detriment. However, in approving the plan today, we know that some members of the public and some elected members have strong concerns about different parts of the plan, including the site at Eckington Way, and have raised these concerns, both today and in other places, about their concerns. The South East councillors and in particular councillor for Mosborough, councillor Tony Downing, have also spoke out about their concerns. This also includes our local MP, Clive Betts, who I understand intends to lead opposition to the Eckington Way site at public evidence sessions while supporting wholeheartedly the local plan. These views need to be heard and just not hearing the council today but also when the plan goes to the independent inspector for consideration. With these views in mind, this amendment asks that the independent inspector pays proper and due regard to the concerns of the public and elected representatives when he or she examines the plan and conducts public hearings. It's also important that we just emphasise, once again, that the future development would also be subject to the usual panic-planning process where local people can express their views on any proposals that traffic biodiversity and air quality assessments should also be considered.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I call upon councillor Chaplin to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to begin by thanking all the officers and all the people across the city who've contributed to the consultation on this plan. I'm going to speak first to the amendment, which is important because I'm sure across not just the Labour Party but probably the party opposite, there's been concerns raised about the Eckington Way proposal and that it has caused a lot of controversy in the local communities and that's why we've come up with this proposal in the amendment, that we want the inspector, when it goes before him or her, to look at that seriously. We've heard earlier from David Hollis the reason why we have to have a piece of land set aside for the travelling showpeople community. And that has to be built in there in a way that it wasn't, that wasn't in 14 years ago when we had the previous plan come before us. I also want to say something about the tilted balance. The whole reason that we need a plan that's up to date is because currently we do have proposals going to planning committee and I know this, not just now that I'm one of the joint chairs alongside Alan, but also previously on planning committee, the Hollins Busk development comes to mind. It was bitterly opposed by the local community there. It's on green space land and many of us felt that it wasn't appropriate development. But because we could not show that we had a land supply that was valid and provable, that was overridden by inspectors. So even if we've got your local interests at heart, unfortunately, unless we have a local plan in place, the inspectors will not accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we now move to general debate on this matter. And first of all, I'm going to call on councillor Ian Horner to speak, which I believe is your maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, yes it is. Let me say that it's my opportunity as a local councillor to speak, not only on behalf of people who voted for me but people who didn't, because the vast majority of people who voted in Baiton in May voted for the two candidates that both said they would oppose this site. But I'm speaking on behalf of people, whether they voted for me or not. When I arrived in Baiton, I landed in the middle of this firefight. A lot has been talked about, about public consultation. I went to the LAC meeting, it's great for me to speak on this now, by the way, because when I went to the LAC meeting as a member of the public, I was not given the opportunity to speak because the chair didn't call me. I want to speak particularly about not just this question, some people seem to be thinking this is just a question about possibly a little campsite or something, a traveller site. There's a full-scale industrial development here, industrial units. Now, I can tell you, and if you look at a question I put councillor Miskel later, about traffic in the South East, the A57 is a very badly congested road. Anybody who rents these units, well, they ain't going to deliver express parcels because they won't get out of the units fast enough to be able to call them express. This is a very congested place. We're about to have, not very far from here, a Burger King with a drive-through about to open, we've got Crystal Peaks as well. So, this site has real problems in terms of density, it also has problems because the council, in deciding its plan, the council is allowed to take regard at cross-border issues. There's a massive site being developed at Catcliffe with industrial units. Why do we need this site at all? We don't, you have not demonstrated a need for it. Let me very quickly also say that air quality has been mentioned. The council, I thought in February, agreed that it would monitor air quality, it's not doing that. How can it be right to put families with children on a site with some of the worst air quality in the country? And finally, to the question of consultation, how patronising it is to keep telling people, we're really pleased that you bothered to answer, but then shut the door on your way out, because that's what we're doing. These people have asked their questions and they've been told, thank you for raising your objection, but we're not going to listen. That's what consultation should be. And finally, to the amendment, it's a piece of paper. You say we can't take that out today, you said we couldn't take it out in February because you didn't allow a debate and now you're saying to the inspector, please would you mind having a look at it and chuck it out then? What happens if he chucks it out then? Why can't we do it today? If you believe it's...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations on your maiden speech. I now call upon councillor Tony Downing.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. The proposed traveller's site and industrial site in Eckington Way is completely inappropriate. It's inappropriate because of the considerable congestion around the Crystal Peaks area and the high level of pollution. It is disappointing that council officers haven't done recent surveys of either. Over many years, the amount of new development in the Mosborough Ward, most of it very welcome, has led to more traffic and more congestion, particularly around Crystal Peaks area. Those of my constituents living in the watertop area have the congestion and the pollution on their doorsteps on a daily basis. Working with Clive Betts MP, we were promised by previous director of planning that the local plan would contain an infrastructure strategy to deal with these issues and so far that hasn't been the case. Council leader Tom Hunt has recognised this problem and agreed that we need to have a new transport plan which particularly addresses these issues in the South East. However, I believe that the transport plan and the measures to alleviate these problems should be in place before new development is considered and not the other way round. The second point is that we have to have a local plan in place as soon as possible, we need proper sites for new housing in the city, but there is a conflict between agreeing a plan and rejecting Eckington Way proposal because under national planning policy, if you reject this site, the whole plan has to be put out for further consultation. We wouldn't, of course, be faced with this dilemma if the Baiton councillors had done their job in looking at the proposed plans before it went out for consultation and objecting to the site at this stage, however, they were asleep at the wheel. If the plan, if it is agreed, will have to go to planning inspectorate and will be subject to an examination...
Thank you, bring your remarks to a close, please.
...when objections can be heard. I will be joining here Clive Betts in making representation to the planning inspectorate.
Thank you, councillor Downing.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Turpin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will also begin by thanking officers, this has been a really arduous and long journey to get to this point for the local plan. It only came about when we entered the cooperative executive, it was too sticky for a single party to implement and that's why we were left without one for about a decade. I've sat on the steering group since the beginning, so over two years, I've sat with colleagues from both sides, Martin Smith initially, Mike Lavery for two years, Andrew Sanger, I've sat with my colleague Brian, Christine Giligan-Cubo, I've sat with Julie Grocott, Ben, Fran. And for two and a half or thereabouts years, we've worked together, we've been meeting up sometimes weekly, usually no more than fortnightly, and it's been really interesting, it's been really challenging for officers, displayed a higher level of professionalism, they've tried to meet our requests. We haven't all got 100% of what we wanted, but we've got a plan that is good. You know, it isn't perfect, it's a good plan and it's not the plan that's written in stone, we are legally obliged to review it within five years. I believe we should revisit it sooner than that and strengthen the plan. Regarding the Lib Dem amendment, when councillor Otten talks about equality, well, you know, inequality is well linked to child obesity, what about that, pal? As has been said extensively, we need a plan to protect Sheffield from scrupulous developers. This plan instills a quality bill that will help tackle the climate crisis, it will help improve biodiversity, it bans fracking, and what could I say?
And then you've come to the end of your remarks.
What makes this site unique, Lord Mayor, is the 15 homes for traveller showpeople, that is what makes it unique and that is what the objections are about.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. The red light is there.
Nobody in the steering group has objected until now.
Councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations councillor Horner on your maiden speech. So here we are, debating a massive issue that will impact the city for decades. We've been told that 80% of consultation respondents have objected to the Eckington Way site, yet as elected members, we are unable to listen to that and amend the plan. So through you, Lord Mayor, to address councillor Downing, we did object to this site before it went to consultation. We tried to table a motion in February and it was pushed off the agenda, but the email that was sent to members with the plan in the first place said, the full council will decide on the final list of sites, yet here we are and we're not being allowed to do that. So once again, the people of Sheffield find themselves gaslit and their concerns sidelined. The council press releases say we need to learn lessons from the trees, but it doesn't appear that we're doing that here. And for me, this is why the council has a bad reputation, this is why people feel ignored because they raise their concerns, you say, oh, thank you for raising your concerns and then you don't actually listen to them. So, this plan in particular is trying to build light industrial units on an active green farm, yes, it is active farmland, where traffic is already unacceptable and the air quality is already at illegal levels. So the plan is trying to force some of society's most disadvantaged and marginalised people to live in a place where the air quality could kill them. That doesn't sound inclusive to me. So as a city, we are implementing a clean air zone in the city centre but a dirty air zone in the South East. So, Lord Mayor, finally, I'm not a town planner, but everyone in this room is this city's democratic voice. So with 80% of people opposing the plan, if you vote for this, you are undermining the very reason we are here.
Next speaker is Ibiola and it is your maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would to express my gratitude to the residents of Netherdreggin Sharrow for granting me this extraordinary privilege and honour to represent them in this historic chamber. As someone who grew up in the ward, I cannot express into words how much this means to me and my family. When I arrived in this country at the age of seven years old, unable to read English, it was at the Hiflett Library where I read my first book. Loughfield Park is where I first kicked my ball. Mount Pleasant Park is where I first rode my swings. So, the community of Netherdreggin Sharrow, along with these diverse communities, means everything to me and I will work tirelessly for those who voted for me, those who did not and those who did not vote at all. Lord Mayor, we have an incredible sense of community and togetherness in Netherdreggin Sharrow and to build more neighbourhoods, connected neighbourhoods like Netherdreggin Sharrow, we need a Sheffield local plan. We require a plan that aligns with the needs of a growing city and of course, a plan that considers the priorities of our citizens, such as protection of our green belts. Lord Mayor, as a new councillor, housing, particularly affordable housing, has been one of the most frequently raised issues with me. The local plan aims to facilitate... The local plan aims to facilitate the construction of over 35,000 new homes and creation of more than 40,000 new jobs. And central to this plan is affordability and sustainability. Lord Mayor, as a major city like ours, we have for far too long operated without a local plan. We now have one. The plan presents an ambitious vision for Sheffield, and I urge all my colleagues in the chamber to support it. Thank you.
Congratulations on your maiden speech, and further congratulations on actually sticking to time. I'm now going to call on councillor Johnson. Can I just warn people that the list of speakers' requests is far longer than we're going to fit in, so some of you I know are going to be disappointed. Councillor Johnson.
Well, thank you councillors, thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations first of all to councillor Horner and councillor Ullah for diving in with your first speeches to something that's quite difficult. It's quite difficult because it's a real decision that this council has to make, I could say unlike some of the other things on the agenda today. But it's fair to say that my colleagues here, and actually many on this side of the chamber, and quite a few on the other side of the chamber, have been critical of previous administrations for not having an up-to-date local plan in place for year after year after year, with the real consequences that this council had too few powers to stop bad developments. Not only does that encourage bad developments, but it allows, it puts a block on those good developers. We want to encourage good property development in this city as well as to stop bad property development. And that's why it would be a really bad step for the city today if we fail to move this local plan on to the next step. And in doing that, councillor Turpin's described the work that's been on across all party groups here, and I want to thank the councillors involved with them and the officers who've put in a hell of a lot of work over the last years, and all the people who've contributed to the comments on the local plan. That's been a really good piece of work, that's happened since we moved to Nova Control, that's facilitated a bit more of that cross-party working, and it means that we get something that none of us is entirely happy with, and where the compromises are shared out between members of all parties. We're at that stage now where this is a chance for this council to take back some control over what we do in Sheffield and not have it our planning policy dictated directly by government through the national planning policy framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll call upon councillor Gayle Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To say I'm disappointed is mild, to be honest. The first time I ever heard you speak, councillor Hunt, was when you became the leader of this council and you kept saying that you believed in listening to people. Well, you're not listening now. This consultation started, the Ekkington Road site did not go on to the plan till late last year. We tried to get you as a council to allow us to amend it then, but you said no. We're here, people are saying today, and you're talking as if we've just decided, we've been fighting this since last year, but you didn't listen. You're not listening to these people. And Fiona, you did a fantastic speak, and I am absolutely proud of you, so well done. You did some good research on your project, you know what you're talking about. It is disgusting that 4,000 people are saying they don't want an industrial site or a travellers' site, not because of the travellers or because it's business, but because that road is so narrow and it's so congested, and it's not fair. You're already a blocking our roads in Mosborough and Baiton, and you're going to make it 10 times worse. Why won't you let us amend it now? You had this opportunity in February, if you'd have listened to us then, it wouldn't be where we are today. So for that reason, I'm not voting for this plan because you do not listen to local people.
And it's now councillor Janet Ridley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillors Ibiola and Ian Horner on their excellent maiden speeches. When developers came to my ward of Stockbridge and Upadon a couple of years ago wanting to build dozens of houses on the green field separating Stockbridge and Deepcar, there was a strong and justified outrage from our local community. People felt that it wasn't right, that this precious green space should be targeted by developers who cared little for its value as a green space or its importance to local biodiversity, but who just wanted to build as many houses as possible they could on it, diminishing and damaging the local environment as a result. This proposed development on the picturesque fields of Hollingbush was strongly objected to by local residents and was rejected by local planners. But without the protection of a local plan being in place, the developers were still able to go ahead and build on this totally inappropriate site, meaning that a beautiful green space rich in wildlife and biodiversity is now gone forever. What has happened in Stockbridge and Deepcar should be a warning to everyone who wants to see our city protected from inappropriate speculative housing development. If our local plan is delayed, our green space and our green belt across the city will be vulnerable and under threat from developers, and the council will be powerless to stop this. We must learn the lessons from what happened at Hollingbush. As councillors, we have a duty to protect our green spaces for future generations, and to do this, we must make sure that a robust and sound local plan is allowed to proceed without delay. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Shepherd-Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to councillor Horner and Ullah for your maiden speeches. Very difficult debate to make maiden speeches, so well done. Lord Mayor, can I just challenge a couple of things that's been said, not only in this chamber but outside, that somehow, I heard it on the radio this morning, that the only thing that needed to happen was if only the local councillors, the Lib Dems, if only said, spoke out against it, this won't happen. But the reality is, some of you were here in February, and we know what happened then. We were told, there's not enough time for a debate, that's it, we're curtailing it, that was 5.30, remember? I left that council chamber at quarter to seven, so there wasn't time to debate the issue that mattered to you, but there were time fine for other things. I'm sure they were all lovable things, but that's the parity that the council puts on. Let me tell you what I've tried, and I've tried so desperately, Fiona's nodding away because I was there, SNL Fiona, when I've come to see you, but for the benefit of others, we tried to put an amendment in, and this is what it says, request allocation of site SESO3 as an industrial and travellers' site to be removed prior to the submission draft Sheffield plan in recognition of extremely high number of representations regarding this site. Request that responses to representation concerning site SESO3 be redrafted to be more fully recognised, the potential impact of congestion, noise, and the loss of green field land on the current residents of Baiton. So the fact that I just wanted to raise that, the thing that I have, or answers me, and I'm sure answers you, is the fact that I can't even put that to the vote today. I can't even put that to it. So we've been rammed through, and that's what, I can't support this, I'm not going to vote in favour of this. It looks like the Green councillors are, and it looks like at the moment the Labour Party, and I'm really sorry for you, because this looks like it's going to get rammed through. And I'll be joining you to object to it when it's there. And you've got to ask yourself, those people that are claiming in the South East that they're going to join the campaign and lead the campaign, what have they actually done? Because if Clive Betts can't even persuade his colleagues over there, and one of them is, some of them are in own constituency, what hope is he have elsewhere?
Thank you. Final remarks. Thank you, it is not helpful shouting out from the gallery. Councillor Ruth Bilson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to members who have made their maiden speeches today. This is about shaping how our city looks, how we're able to provide new homes in the right places, and how Sheffield can become more sustainable. Feedback on the plan spans an array of topics, each of which means a lot to those who have made the submissions. We really owe a debt of thanks to the individuals and organisations for the voluntary efforts they've made towards improving the draft plan. Seeing how they've influenced a great number of small but powerful amendments, I feel very grateful. And as an example, I have a list here of 12 voluntary organisations and charitable organisations that have given input on the blue-green infrastructure and nature connectivity, which are incredibly important threads throughout the plan. Thank you. Regather also deserves a name check for ensuring that food access and sustainable food, local food production, are given the parity of esteem they deserve in the next decades of developing Sheffield. The vulnerability of no plan has manifested in my ward Crooks and Crosspool, where we've lost a community garden green space because we had no local plan. A second green space is currently under threat with a twice-rejected planning application now taken to appeal. If we don't progress this plan, we're leaving the door wide open to ad hoc, unsuitable developments. So let's vote together to progress the plan for the protection of our green spaces and to grow our city sustainably. And I just want to add, Lord Mayor, that flying in the face of public health advice, which is widely recognised and written about through peer-reviewed scientific papers, and fighting for the unchecked proliferation of unhealthy food near schools whilst allowing oneself to be allied to 55 Tufton Street is really a bizarre hill to die on. Thank you.
We're virtually out of time, so the final speaker before councillor Hunt has the right of reply is councillor Ann Wallhouse.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to the two maiden speeches. I just wanted to say that I don't think there has been a proper consultation over the Ekkington Way site. The small public meeting that there was, was ticket-only, and very few people, unless they knew about it, could get tickets in time. There's been various questions asked, various petitions put, and none of them have been regarded. And it always seemed to me, even at the public meeting one, that it was already decided what was going to happen. So I just feel that we haven't had a fair say in what happens. I'd also like to comment on the fact that we were told, or we have been told, particularly by Clive Betts, that we didn't look at the question of the site on Ekkington Road, because we did, but it wasn't at the top of the list originally when the original plan came out. So there was no way that you needed to say that you didn't want it. And I'd also like to say that Clive Betts had sight of that original plan, so why didn't he do something about it at the time? He's the MP for the South East, we're the candidates, or we're the, sorry, the councillors for Baiton. Mosborough is also badly affected, and I'd also like to say that the industrial unit sites, the council are saying that they're going to be needed, the ones that we've already got, particularly in the Mosborough area, aren't used. So why do we need more? I know it's a 10-year plan, but the way Sheffield's going at the moment, I can't see who will be coming in, and it's going to make the roads around Crystal Peaks, Drake House, and all those are going to get steadily worse. People who live on the Flower Estate in the Baiton ward and on Drake House can't even get out of the road to get onto the main roads at the moment, so it's going to be even worse if they decide that they're going to put these sites there, unless they're going to build a flyover or something. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, can I just make a point of order, Lord Mayor? There are a number of people up in the gallery up here, I can't see how many because we're down in this corner, that have come to listen to this today. It's clearly a big issue and a big debate, and you said you've got more speakers. Can we not extend this to, close the list and let people speak in? Because a number of us have indicated, and it seems to be a predetermined list that was put forward, that we're never going to get a chance to speak. People have come here and want to listen to colleagues who want to make points. I make an appeal to colleagues on the council, do we extend this to the end of the speakers on this debate, Lord Mayor? Thank you.
It's not very often I agree with Brian.
Councillor Mohammed, it is me that is chairing this meeting. Councillor Mohammed, do you have a point to make?
Yeah, it's not very often I agree with Brian, but on this occasion, I think the list that you've got, Lord Mayor, really ought to have its say. Whether it influences anybody, how they vote, I do not know, but at least allow those who want to have a say, say it, but the list is now closed. How many articulatives there, Lord Mayor?
I have nine more speakers have indicated. Can I have just a brief indication whether I allow those nine speakers? Those who think I ought to allow those nine speakers, please indicate. Those who don't wish to allow those nine speakers, I am going to then use my discretion and allow no others but the ones who've indicated. And just for clarity, I've got councillor Holmshaw, councillor Barak, councillor Fox, Terry Fox, councillor Lodge, councillor Price, councillor McGovern, councillor Davison, councillor Maru, and Sophie as well. That is the only, I've said McGowan and Price. Yeah, those are the only ones. I hadn't seen you indicated before, so I'm going to close it at those nine. Right, the first person I'm going to debate is, I did not allow you when you indicated to close the list, so again, you are the very last person that will speak, councillor Elliot. Councillor Holmshaw first then.
Thank you for that, Lord Mayor. And congratulations to councillor Ibiola and to councillor Ian Horner on their maiden speeches. I've worked across the board with all parties and with planners and with the local plan officers to try and push forward this local plan. What I'm going to do first, though, is not just congratulate those people I've been working with, but actually some of the positive comments that have been made already in this meeting. Councillor Paul Turpin for one, but also councillor Mary Lee, who has mentioned the impact on the city's policies of not putting this local plan through. But also councillor Mike Chaplin, who mentioned the tilted balance as well, and the impact that has on the local plan, sorry, our local development. So not having the local plan has damaged our city. We must put it through. Its infrastructure has been damaged, its buildings, its environment, its economic development, and its heritage have all been damaged already by not having, oh, in Boris Johnson's words, an often-ready local plan. I encourage every councillor to get this over the line, vote for the local plan, and to stop damaging our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Minash next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillors Horner and Ullah for fantastic maiden speeches. I wanted to focus us on the broader implications of having a local plan. Earlier this summer, I canvassed with young climate activists campaigning for a Green New Deal. Their guiding principle, which drives them to doorstep, doorknob residents and build their campaign, is that we are at a decisive moment in history and we need to create well-paid, unionised, green jobs to transform our economy. As much as the local plan sets out where our new housing needs to be built and offers protections from green belt developments, it is also a plan for our economic development. It's a plan that will create 43,000 new jobs and at its heart is a commitment to sustainability. If I've had one recurrent message in this chamber, is that we must address the climate crisis in a way that creates good green jobs and sees no division between social, economic, and climate justice. Sheffield's advanced manufacturing and research expertise provides great potential to create new jobs that will drive our green economy. The draft plan presents an ambitious vision for advanced manufacturing and new green industries, and it will deliver high-skilled, high-wage jobs for the city. As others have said, this plan not going through will enable a free-for-all for private developers to build on green belt sites. It will also unpick decades of work to redevelop Sheffield's manufacturing capacity, our fight back against factors deindustrialisation. This plan would position us as a starting point for a green industrial revolution for Sheffield to drive our national economy's green transition. I urge colleagues in this chamber to vote in favour of the draft local plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Sophie Thornton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I've already said, it's not helpful interruptions from the gallery. I'm extending the debate already, and I want to get members a chance to have their say. It's a debate amongst members, this. Councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillors Horner and councillor Ullah for your maiden speeches. Like many others, I'm also wanting to speak on Eckington Way. It's not just traffic, it's not just air quality, it's over a major gas pipe, climate pylons, it's next to empty industrial units, it's next to green belt land. We were told it is not active farmland, but at the risk of sounding like the Whirzles with a brand-new combine harvester, I was at my future mother-in-law's the other day, and look what went past her garden fence as she lives directly back onto the site. Now, I'd like to ask us all, why are we here? Why are we here? We're here because we care, we're here because we want to work hard in our communities, and we're here because we want to support people and listen. Now, then what is the point in thousands of residents in South East responding to consultation, coming to public meetings and local area committees, or coming to full council, responding to council surveys and emails, for us to just turn around and cover our ears and say overwhelmingly, no, we don't, we're not listening to you? Now, councillor Holmshaw, you said that you're going to vote for this to not damage our city, but is that okay for areas in the South East? I'd love for any member who is wanting to speak in favour of this today to explain to me this: what is the point in a public consultation if there is no opportunity for the public to make any meaningful change to it? What is the point in that? What is the point if councillors like my colleagues today have tried to table amendments where we can vote on it today, we can't even be allowed to get it onto the floor to put it to a vote? Because that's what you're supporting in voting in favour of this today? Business as usual from Sheffield City Council, same as the trees, not listening, we know best at the town hall, and the public's view doesn't matter. I'd urge colleagues across this chamber to think long and hard about the message that that is going to send to the public, particularly in the South East today. Thank you.
Councillor Terry Fox.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, congratulations to councillor Horner and to Ibi on her maiden speeches, and to the member of Pibbick, who I thought was very eloquent of how she put it over. Lord Mayor, I want to publicly explain why I will be voting against this local plan. Lord Mayor, this is the first test from the LowCOP report, the first test of this council, the council that I stood up and publicly made a commitment and an apology to the people of this city, that we would not go down that track again. I made a commitment with officers that we would take those recommendations and commit to those recommendations. Lord Mayor, to look people in the eye and say that we didn't uphold those commitments. I did that knowing full well that years earlier I had gone round this city with a number of members on a big city conversation, talking to thousands and thousands and thousands of residents in this city about why they were not interacting with us. They told me they wanted to affect the places where they live, where they work, where they play. And it was all futile, because we knew best. Lord Mayor, LowCOP said to us, LowCOP said to us, the plan was flawed from the beginning, from the beginning. We've already put in an amendment here to say there may be an issue in the beginning. And let's not forget, at the back of those recommendations, when I did the media and they asked me, have you learnt the lessons? LowCOP said, the inquiry identified a number of lessons from the dispute, but identifying a lesson is not a lesson learned. If the lessons are to be learned by this council, they are to be fully discussed but acted upon on behalf of our communities. Lord Mayor, we set up the lights, we put a lot of effort into those lights, put a lot of money into those lights for people to have a voice. Lord Mayor, for me, there should be a plan for all of Sheffield, not for part of it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Davison.
Well, follow that. That was an amazing speech, I must say, councillor Fox. My problem is, and I'd say challenge really, if you look before you on that desk, there is a mace. What does that mace tell us? That mace tells us that we have the authority from Parliament to make decisions. Now, what on earth is going on when you say a particular party or a particular person cannot put in an amendment? That can't be right. This is a, or should be a democratic forum, and we are seeing something which we've been railroaded into. I'm not against this plan, I think there's a lot of good things in the plan, and I want it eventually to be successful. But the problem is, I want also to vote for that amendment that you're not allowing us to vote on. Now, I have a daughter that's a lawyer, one of the greatest, one of the top lawyers in the country, she's a partner in one of the big companies. So I know a little bit about law, and I challenge your interpretation, or anybody else's interpretation of the law on this point, and I point to that mace there. We have the direct authority from Parliament to make discussions in this chamber and make decisions for all the people of this city. Thank you very much.
Councillor Brian Lodge.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to Lord Mayor for colleagues and for allowing you the speakers to speak here. Congratulations, Ian and Ibi, to making your maiden speeches on such a passionate, passionate debate that's going on in here. I live in the South East, I was born in the South East, I was born in Hackenthal when it was part of the rural district of Chesterfield. And I remember when there were large green tracts of land that went all the way through from Hackenthal to Mosborough, that halfway didn't exist, that Oxtown, Oxclose didn't exist, Owlthorpe didn't exist, Southall was a small area down in Baiton. I've seen large tracts of green land that have gone across the South East, all the Mosborough townships. I understand how important it is that we have new houses. I understand that, we've experienced it across the South East. I also recognise that we need to build more council houses, and I hope to see the stalled council house building in Burley Ward, where we've got a big hole in the ground, that they get on with it, because nothing's happened since. But I have more respect the residents of the South East, who have come out and have spoken in great volume, and congratulations today for the representations you made and for the people that participated in the consultation, who attended the light, the Stratian Resources meeting, and again, coming along today. I'm in a very difficult position today. Twenty years I've been on this council, never once, never once have I voted against the whip, never once. I have abided by collective responsibility throughout my time on this council. As a cabinet member, I have fronted policy decisions at great detriment to myself, and that's well documented recently, for collective responsibility. Sheffield needs a local plan, a plan that protects the golden frame, the green belt of Sheffield. But it needs a plan that recognises the communities of this city and listens to the communities that came out.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, I cannot support this plan, I will be voting against it. The South East has seen the biggest development and no infrastructure to support it.
Councillor Peter Price.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I plead with colleagues, the comrades, not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We have a massive issue here, we have been told we've got to find sites for 35,000 homes, 35,000 homes, and if we don't, developers will have the right to build where they want with minimum restrictions. Now, I know over the years you've all fought for pots of land in your patches and won it at planning. Them days have gone, because developers are going to come in, and if they can make a case, they will build on it. And the green belt, it frightens me, I've been very proud of the Labour movement's historic role in getting green belts around industrial cities. That's under threat, that's under threat now, because I've been on planning a long time, and I know developers, and they can't wait to get their hands on those lovely green areas to build houses and make their money. If we don't have a plan soon, that opportunity will be gone, and they will snap it up as soon as they possibly can. I'll be very careful, I understand the product, I've had the same issue when they want to do a site down in Grimeshope, so I know the problems, but I hope the amendment that's moved by Mayor will give the opportunity to take it local when the inspector comes. If all the issues you say are true, he will turn down on planning grounds, and that's the issue, the planning law, it won't allow those to live on that site if those issues are exposed. And I think there's a chance that's where it belongs. But for God's sake, don't throw out all this plan for that, because the rest of the city will suffer dramatically. I mean, I fought for, a wink of mankill, we fought off that developer, and we, thank God, we won. But if they come back again, we'll knock if this doesn't get through. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Beruf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't actually going to speak on this, so I don't actually have an actual speech, but I feel quite strongly about this, hence me asking you to allow me to speak on this. I accept that we need a local plan. I have been one of the strongest critics of this council, that we haven't had a local plan from the perspective of a developer. But I do have a red line, and that red line is that we have asked people to be consultees in this process, and when they've consulted with us and given their opinion, we are choosing to ignore it. And that, for me, doesn't sit particularly well, because that is a democratic right that we're asking people to exercise, and they have done so. And because they've done so, we've now chosen to ignore it completely. I mean, why are we sat here if we're going to ignore everything every time anything comes forward that is controversial? From what I'm hearing is that we're ignoring the consultation that's been taking place around Eckington, we have put it in the plan, we are relying on the inspector to pick it up and say, look, this might not be the best site for it, and if the inspector chooses to allow it to go through, we will then be going to a planning application stage where people will be able to object. Yes, they will be able to object, but the bottom line here is that the local plan has already said that this site is actually suitable for the use that you're putting it to. And therefore, being a practitioner as well, my argument would be on technical grounds, not on the grounds of the fact that the established use has already been established. I don't see this as being right. It may be an issue for other people, but I don't see this being right, and that's the reason I've stood up, and I support what the people at Eckington are trying to do. Thank you.
Councillor Elliot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for squeezing me in, and congratulations to councillor Horner and councillor Ullah on your maiden speeches. I just want to say thank you to people who responded to the consultation, and to mention that there was a huge amount of public interest and awareness in nature, biodiversity, and our green and blue nature corridors. The amendments, as a result of the consultation, make sure that stronger commitments to biodiversity and nature recovery are addressed. I'd personally like them to go further, but I acknowledge that there is still room for improvement. We're really lucky that Sheffield has five major rivers and plenty of other smaller watercourses, and these are clearly very important to people and nature, and need to be valued for their rich contribution to the environment. The new responsibilities under the Environment Act provide the opportunity to include biodiversity net gain in the local plan, and this is really positive, as it links biodiversity to the overall strategy, enabling a more holistic approach to environmental land management in the planning stages and not just as an afterthought. In light of the nature emergency, this is really welcome, we need to protect species and woodlands and waterways. Lots of cross-party work has gone into this local plan, and it's important for the council to have a clear plan to prevent bad developers taking advantage. So the plan needs to pass to the next stage to keep our green spaces. Thank you.
And the final speaker, councillor Gall.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to those new councillors that have made their maiden speeches. I want to firstly address some of the comments that's come out today. Councillor Horner saying that he didn't have a chance to speak at the light meeting, I chaired that meeting, there was over 100 people there, it was really difficult to get everybody a chance to have their say at that meeting. That wasn't the first meeting, that was the second meeting, that was a special meeting that we called. The first meeting was held at Woodhouse Ward, and that's where the local plan came, and then when we realised what an issue it was, we had one in Baiton Ward so that everybody could come along to it. The residents who spoke so well and did the petition, you asked a question about why was it removed from Mosborough Ward? It was removed because the Mosborough councillor contacted, Tony Downing contacted MP, his MP, Clive Betts, and raised it with him and objected to it. All councillors were given the local plans for their areas on the 11th of July 2022. We all got given the plan. I got Burley Ward, where I'm a councillor, I objected to things in there on the 18th of July, I asked officers, and Baiton councillors did nothing, they said nothing. That was the opportunity before it even went through into this. Councillor Anwold, when you said that it wasn't the top of the priority, it doesn't matter where it is, if it's down, I would have been saying, second, third, fourth, we don't want it, we don't want it, that's what I would have been saying. The three Lib Dem councillors did nothing, like I say, and I don't know why they didn't contact their MP and raise it with him. But previous councillors, Ian Saunders and Chris Roslin-Joseph, in 2022, both objected.
Thank you, you caught the red light, thank you. Now, the move of the motion, councillor Hunt has two minutes right of reply.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you all for a really passionate and helpful set of speeches, and congratulations to councillor Horner and councillor Ullah for your maiden speeches, the first of many great speeches, I'm sure. Lord Mayor, councillors, we can consult, but we may disagree. And fundamentally, for all of us, 84 councillors, we are here to represent our wards, yes, but we're here to represent the whole city. And at times, this means that we have to weigh up competing demands, the calls upon us from local residents, from certain parts of the city versus the wider gains that can be achieved from a particular piece of legislation or decision that we in this chamber must make. That is our responsibility as 84 city councillors. Councillor Price is absolutely right when he highlights the risks, as is councillor Lee and councillor Chaplin. Without this in place, the tilted balance in favour of developers remains. That takes away our ability as a city council to control our own destiny when it comes to planning applications. We risk the government reopening the housing number calculations that we are asked to find. They may come to us if we delay and say you have to find more sites for more houses, that puts more sites across the city at potential risk. The green belt is at threat if we delay. In 2021, councillor Mohammed said it will signal a green light if we delay for developers to come to this city, thinking that they can nibble away at the green belt. That nibbling away will take place in Dor, in Forward, in Stalington, in West Ecclesfield, East Ecclesfield, Mosborough, right on the fringes of this city. That is what is at stake today, no more delay, cross-party calls have come.
Councillor Hunt, you have the red light.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, we are now moving to the vote on the First Amendment, Amendment Day, which is a long time, just let me finish. Is the amendment moved by councillor Orton?
Yes, councillor Turpin.
I need a show of hands, it needs to be 11 hands. That's more than 11 hands, so that will be a recorded vote on the First Amendment. No, you were on the First Amendment, you asked for recorded You asked for a recorded vote just on councillor Orton's amendment. Do you want to withdraw that request? We're not there yet. Let me explain to you how this happens. We move each amendment, we vote on each amendment. After we've completed the votes on each amendment, we then vote on the substantive motion. I take it that you are wanting a recorded vote on the substantive motion rather than each individual amendment? So you do want a recorded vote on the First Amendment? I'll do this again, just to be sure. We are now, councillor Turpin has confirmed he wants a recorded vote on Amendment A. Have I got 11 hands agreeing with that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I have exactly 11. So we will have a recorded vote on the First Amendment, which will be by roll call or can I do it by electronic? I actually, rather than going through by names, because our names are recorded electronically, we could do it by the electronic, which will be a more efficient way of doing it. Can I remind people that what happens, I'll just do this on the first vote, you first of all have to register that you are here. You will then get the option of voting for, against or abstaining. If for any reason you press the wrong button, i.e. vote for when you should be voted against, you can override that by pressing the correct button. I will allow about a minute for the voting, but I'll be looking at the total number of votes cast and I want to make sure that the number of votes cast tallies with the number of people who are registered here at present. I hope that's clear. I only had 68 people registered to vote and I think there are about 75 people. So can people make sure they're pressing the buttons? 73 voted and one is left to vote. Your last chance as somebody is not voted. That means they've pressed the. We've got two abstentions, 45 against, 26, but I've still got somebody to vote. But I'm going to close the vote now, which is not going to change that that amendment is clearly lost. Okay, can we? Yes, the total votes were 26 in favour of the amendment, 46 against, two abstentions, one person didn't, no vote. We're now going on to the Second Amendment, Amendment B. Again, is a recorded vote requested on this? No. So we're just going to a straightforward electronic vote. Yeah. Voting in parts. Just the Green Party, what is, what you're voting in parts? Can you say what it is?
In voting for this amendment, we'll be voting against part J.
Okay, anybody else voting in parts? Okay, can we clear the screen and get ready for the next vote, please? Okay, that cleared it. For this amendment, we have 38 votes in favour, 29 against, eight abstentions. Therefore, the amendment is carried. We now go on to the vote on the substantive motion as amended. We just, let me just add a clarification because part of that might not have been. So J will have dropped out. Yeah, we're assuming that there were 13 green votes. 11 is it? So we think. Apologies for the delay, but I just want to get it cleared because I need to find out whether J passed or didn't pass. So that means that J is lost. Yeah, yeah. J has been lost, so we've got a vote on the substantive motion as modified by the Second Amendment minus J. Okay, do I take it that people want to, can I have 11 shows of hands if it wanted a recorded vote? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I have more than 11, so it's a recorded vote. But again, we'll conduct this electronically. Lord Mayor, can I just ask? Can we just pause this? Can we just pause this?
If it's a recorded vote, surely we can't have it where somebody doesn't vote? In the first one, there was someone who didn't vote. If it's a recorded vote.
It'll be recorded as a no vote abstention.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah, I will delay if there's a couple of technical issues. I forgot to say about voting in parts and I hope nobody wanted to vote in parts on the substantive. Four people, three people still to vote. It is a completely democratic right to abstain in any vote. You have three options and it's nothing I really ought to explain. There is for or against or abstentions. One person still, one person still to vote. Can the whips check that we've got one person not voted? I'm going to have to close the vote in a minute because the actual one vote will. There is still one person registered vote not voted, but I am giving one last chance to find out who it is. Okay, in that case, the final vote is 37 in favour, 17 against, 20 abstentions. Therefore, it is being passed. Thank you, thank you. That is the democratic vote. I now propose to take the comfort break at this point. Can the whips come and please see me here? Okay, apologies for the delay in the resumption. We are now up to, thank you, we started, we are live. We're now up to item seven on the constitution. This is changed the constitution, the maximum time needed, 25 minutes for this item. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the general council and monitoring officer published up with the agenda for this meeting, seeking approval for various changes to be made to the council's constitution. The changes will bring the constitution up to date by reflecting the recent changes made to the council's senior officer leadership team and organisational structure, including incorporating the changes of designations from executive directors to strategic directors and other changes made to officer titles and responsibilities. There are other minor changes recommended by the council's monitoring officer for reasons of clarification or simplification or otherwise to reflect the recent changes such as those resulting from the introduction of the Health and Care Act 2022. In addition, changes are proposed following the annual review of the council's financial procedures rules and changes are proposed to be made to the procedure for dealing with complaints regarding city, parish and town councillors and have been recommended by the council's audit and standards committee. The motion to approve the recommendation in the report is to be moved by councillor Sue Alston and seconded by councillor Sean O'Meara Richards. And this is the third time of asking for this report, if you remember, so hopefully it's going to be third time lucky we get the constitution changes approved. Councillor Alston?
I'll formally move this, Lord Mayor, but I'd like to reserve the right to comment if necessary. Thank you.
Councillor Richard?
Formally seconded, but also with the right to comment if necessary.
There are no amendments as any member wishes to speak. Councillor Terry Fox, yes.
Sorry, it just dipped, so I didn't know. Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for everybody for taking the time to go back and just look at the issues to take back to the governance committee through this constitution, Lord Mayor. I just want to make one point if I can and a plea to the members of the governance committee is about the power of recall from decisions of committees. I honestly believe that when we did the referendum and decision making through the transition committees, when we went to committees, there was always an opportunity that if members of a ward that was not on a committee that made a decision can somehow have some say in that. So I take the etch-a-skull where the decision in Millhouses to extend, my understanding is not a local council had an opportunity to speak on that, but maybe have wanted to if those minutes would have come to this council, Lord Mayor. And I understand that the governance committee is looking at how full council works because if we are not allowed as the sovereign body to challenge some of those decisions made at the committee, then for me, what's the point of full council anymore? If we're not being able, we should leave it with those nine members on those committees. And with the scrutiny function being took art of the council, it would be good for the governance committee to have on their radar of how we would scrutinise. I plead that as a cabinet member, you used to be able to get called into scrutiny for those decisions, whereas a committee now can make a decision that can have a knock-on effect for a number of years. I say about the communities committee that has now took a decision on the leisure that is going to now impact this council on a 30-year borrowing after all the years we've had of the World Student Games debt and we're going to pay the Luxembourg bond off. That has a massive effect on our medium-term financial and I did ask the new finance officer, Lord Mayor, to concentrate. Thanks for listening, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Fox, are there any other members who wish to speak? Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, thanks, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief, but just to echo the comments of councillor Fox, there are positions within, there are committees and the terms of reference to some committees that can take decisions with impact on the whole city and there ought to be some way that we can discuss that and bring those here into the council. So I do echo his comments and urge colleagues on the governance committee to look at that and bring that forward. I'm on any of the policy committees, so I don't have an opportunity to address some of those things in there. That would give me, and I'm sure there are other colleagues in here on statutory boards, not policy committees, that would give me the opportunity and them as well to discuss things. Many years ago, when I came on, we used to have the minutes of committees and you could make observations and that was a way to address those things and bring them back. But I do think we need to look at that and have a way that we as a full council can comment on things rather than nine people on a committee of whatever persuasion to make a decision, particularly when there's things like AMI contracts, Viola contracts, leisure contracts, you know, you've got the issues around the charitable trustees subcommittee and things like that. So we really need to have something that we as the council have an opportunity. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody, any other members? Councillor Rooney?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's just that I, I think it's related to what's just been said, but I think there's an imbalance in the authority that is wielded or the power that is wielded by the various committees that we now have. The Strategy and Resources Committee and the Finance Committee, to me, seem to take all of the really big decisions and the rest of us, if we're sat on a committee, sometimes we have to refer items on our committees to the Strategy and Resources for them to make a decision rather than the committee that you happen to be on. And to me, what we've done is basically recreated a cabinet because that Strategy and Resources Committee, in my view, actually, it carries out the functions of what the cabinet used to do and I think that's not what was intended.
Thank you, councillor Rooney. And can I just say, it's nice to have you back on something like your old form, bit of a pain at times, but nice to have you back.
You may regret saying that, Lord Mayor.
I realise as soon as. I realised as soon as I said it, I would probably do that. Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Richardson, councillor Olston? Just councillor, we have the right to reply anyway, so for two minutes, yes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you to colleagues for raising issues. Obviously, it is absolutely right and proper that as a full council, we keep our constitution under review and our processes and systems for democracy under review. I would point out, however, that the items on the motion that we're discussing today do not directly relate to the issues that have been raised. And therefore, I'm very keen to encourage colleagues to pass this motion. It's already been agreed informally, and I've no doubt will be agreed formally, that the governance committee will look again at the processes for review. It was discussed at length when we initially developed the system and the system we agreed was, of course, voted through eighteen months ago now. And we should keep the system under review. I've absolutely agreed, I know that the Chair of Governance has agreed outside this meeting that we will look at it. If councillor Rooney would very kindly give me his comments in an email so I know I've got it right, I am more than happy to raise those at the governance committee, of course. So please, colleagues, can you support this motion and get these changes made so we can move forward and then we'll look at what else needs to be changed as we go on? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I know other speakers indicated, can we indicate if there's any dissent? Otherwise, I'll take it that this is agreed unanimously. Agreed? Agreed, that then is passed. Thank you. Right, item number eight is members' questions. The maximum time limit is thirty minutes for this. Be conscious of the clock of those who are asking supplementary questions. Item eight point one, questions on urgent business. I am allowing a question on urgent business from councillor Ian Auckland, who's got three questions regarding the safety of school and public buildings, clearly related to the RAC issue. This follows the order issued by the government on the thirty-first of August relating to school buildings containing reinforced autoclaved aerated concrete rack. In accordance with the provisions of Council Procedure Rule sixteen point six, brackets two, I propose to grant permission for councillor Auckland to ask his questions, which will be answered by councillor Dawn Dale, Chair of Education, Children and Families Policy Committee, and by councillor Tom Hunt, the leader of the council. Councillor Auckland?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and my thanks to councillor Dale for agreeing to take this urgent question. Following the government's order to over one hundred schools across the country to immediately vacate buildings made of reinforced autoclave aerinated concrete, how many schools in Sheffield are affected by this order? And how is this council working to support schools to begin the term as normal? In particular, to what extent is Abbey Lane Primary School affected? And what support is Sheffield City Council offering this school? Lord Mayor, if it just kind of happened for councillor Dale, this has been now raked over in the media, but I feel still the question is valid because councillor Dale may wish to make a statement in this forum, which is the correct place, I think, to acquaint members with the situation. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Auckland for bringing this question today. I hope you would extend me the courtesy of being able to give all members an update on the current situation as well as answering the questions that councillor Auckland has put forward to me today. On your first question, councillor Auckland, no schools in Sheffield have been affected by this change of policy by the DFE and there are no schools that have had to vacate their buildings. I will go on to answer the second part of that question in my update, if that's okay. In particular, to what extent Abbey Lane Primary School has been affected? Well, Abbey Lane was identified as having RAC present in limited areas of the school in two thousand and one. Since then, we have put in place a number of mitigations with the school to keep Abbey Lane open. And now on site are a work, a works team who are replacing the RAC panels. This work will be finished, as I said publicly last on Friday, by December. Temporal kitchen arrangements have been required as part of the affected area with over, which is over the school kitchen. And these will remain in place until the school is fully handed back. I would like to say, though, that this was work that we have acted swiftly on and carried out with our own budget to keep children and staff safe and to cause as little disruption as possible. The latest position in Sheffield is that Sheffield has a hundred and seventy-nine schools, seventy-three maintained by Sheffield City Council, which we are responsible for, and a hundred and six academies. For maintained schools where Sheffield City Council is the responsible body, we carried out a desktop exercise to identify schools that were built between the time period of nineteen fifty and the year two thousand. There were thirty-five schools identified as part of that desktop exercise. These schools were specifically targeted in our communication, engagement and information sharing of RAC since February twenty twenty-three. All thirty-five schools as of today have confirmed that visual inspections have been carried out to identify presence of RAC. Four schools this week have expressed concerns about RAC. Three have been cleared by surveyors and one is being surveyed today. Guidelines on how to carry out a visual inspection were reissued and shared with all schools and academies in the city this week. Sheffield City Council has been working with its partners, Learn Sheffield, to support schools as they begin the new term to continue our assessment process. Information and guidance has been supplied to all head teachers and contact details given. We are following this up with an already pre-planned survey of all schools, which will check specifically for potential RAC as well as commenting on their general condition to inform our ongoing capital programme. We are waiting currently for our external survey provider to share the costs and timeline for these surveys, which will be accelerated. In relation to academies, we don't have access to their estate information in the same way that we do for maintained schools. However, we are liaising closely with the DFE, who have not highlighted to us any academies that have RAC present. The DFE have published today their list of schools and only one school in Sheffield is on that list, which is Abbey Lane, where you are all aware that we've been working with them since earlier on this year. I would like to reassure members that offices are meeting daily to enable different teams within the council to coordinate activity and request to share knowledge and information with each other. These meetings have included colleagues from FM, comms, information management, as well as members from our education team. They have also been attended by senior colleagues from Learn Sheffield. I would like to reassure you that we are taking a proactive approach to this and will respond to any changes when they arise in the same way that we did at Abbey Lane. As members of the committee, we are having planned weekly meetings as well as daily insights into the situation as it unfolds. And I will ensure that all members receive those updates on a weekly basis and assure every ward member, if a school is identified in your ward, to have any concerns, you will be contacted directly so that you can support your schools and your school communities. Lord Mayor, once we have finished members' questions, we are going to go into a debate regarding child poverty and the cost of living. So we cannot move away from the fact that the impact of austerity cannot always immediately be seen. But crumbling schools and hospitals in public buildings are a direct result of devastating cuts to public services. We have endured thirteen years of austerity and which commenced at the hands of consecutive governments since two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, one of the first acts of the government of the time was to cancel the Building Schools for the Future Programme. And the BBC has revealed that this included pausing the work on thirteen schools where RAC had been identified. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Your next question is to councillor Hunt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Dale for your answer to the question. So my question is to the leader of the council. Is the council aware of the prevalence of RAC in council-owned buildings, other public buildings, e.g. schools and hospitals, and private buildings in Sheffield? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Hunt, yeah?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Auckland for giving us the opportunity to share the information today about the council-owned private buildings in Sheffield. What the council is doing, I can assure members, is reviewing its building data for buildings constructed in the second half of the last century. As a precautionary measure, we will inspect properties within this period and identify any that might have RAC. Our inspections will follow government advice and guidance to ensure that thorough assessments are undertaken and that we'll undertake, we'll take the appropriate action to mitigate risks if found. What I would say to members is we do undertake comprehensive surveys of our main buildings at various frequencies, including the condition of all the main elements, roofs, windows, the heating. However, as we're now finding across the country and across the built environment writ large, RAC was not being previously surveyed and was not being looked for, but it will now be included in our survey programme. This work is going to have five phases. As councillor Dale said, it begins first with a desktop study to gather information. This work is underway. It will look at the existing information we already hold. We will then look for RAC in any building where we think it might be present. We will then appoint building surveyors. And then we will risk assess the risk that could come from that RAC if it is found. And then we will conduct remedial work if required. And of course, that would be followed by continual monitoring of RAC if it is found. The executive director for neighbourhood services is coordinating a cross-council group of officers to ensure that speedy action is taken. I've asked to be regularly updated on this work. It's of great importance and of great concern to all of us. Our estate, though, is large and this work is going to take time. And I sincerely hope that government provides us with the resources that we're going to need to deal with those remedial actions if RAC is found. I think, Lord Mayor, it's worth noting, as councillor Dale has said, that we are at the end of thirteen years of austerity, thirteen years of sustained chronic under-investment in our public sector. Ten years ago, the then chancellor of the exchequer, George Osborne, in the coalition government, said, "We will fix the roof when the sun is shining." We've got roofs that are falling in because that government chose to slash capital budgets for our schools, our councils and the rest of the public sector. That's the reality of what we're dealing with. One year ago today, Liz Truss stood outside Number Ten when she became Prime Minister and said, "We're going to rebuild our economy." Within a month, she tanked it, which means that now there is less money to be able to deal with these remedial actions if they're needed. That's what we're dealing with and we should all be furious about the conditions that children in this city and across the country are in. We should be furious about the fact that our schools have been chronically under-invested in to the point where they are now at risk of collapse. We will do all we can to make sure that the estate is safe. That begins with that surveying programme and I'll commit to keep members updated about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. And I think we all agree that actually this met the criteria of what an urgent question should be about because it's a moving situation. And like councillor Dale undertook to notify about schools in wards, it would be helpful if other public buildings, councillor Hunt, you know, local members were alerted if it affected a building in their ward as well. Thank you. Right, we now move on to eight point two, which is questions on the joint authorities. And this is to provide the opportunity for members of the council to ask questions on the discharge of the functions of the South Yorkshire Joint Authorities for fire and rescue, pensions and of the South Yorkshire Mayor Combined Authority. Are there any questions relating to those? No, we are then moving on to supplementary questions, written questions from the lead... Yeah, basically it's on the paper, written questions from the leader of the council and policy committee and subcommittee chairs to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting. They've been circulated at the meeting and this is an opportunity for supplementary questions to be asked, one on each topic. And I'll go through it page by page, but please be conscious of the time. Question one, sorry, page one, page one. Page two? Brian? Page three, Brian?
Thank you for your reply, Tom, on question three, answer three. So this says that there isn't a tenure contract? If there isn't a contract on tram lines with Hillsborough Park, is there another form of agreement? And how binding is that agreement on tram lines staying in Hillsborough Park? So if you could answer that?
Thank you councillor Homshaw. The agreement is set out in the answer that tram lines have a premises licence that would remain in place until revoked by the council following those criteria that are set out there. There is an update paper, I believe, going to the Economic Development and Skills Committees and also the Communities Parks and Leasures Committees, yeah, councillor Williams is confirming, later this month, when members of those two committees will have a full update on the situation with tram lines.
Four and five, eight, six, Ruth?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question one, answer one. It is really a shame that the Derek Dooley Sports and Community Centre in Crooks and the football pitch is associated with it have been lying dormant. I've had conversations with local residents, grassroots organisations like Crossball Juniors Football Club, and we do know it would be extremely valuable if we could bring new life back to that site. Crossball Juniors, for example, having to cancel some of their matches because they don't have a playing pitch on every occasion. Our lack officers have reached out to Sheffield United, but we have heard back that there's no intention of bringing the site back into use. So will councillor Williams, would you and the committee ask officers to press ahead with some urgency, continuing to work with Sheffield United to negotiate bringing the Western View facility back into community use so our grassroots football can fulfil more of their potential? Thank you.
Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Ruth. Yeah, I'm more than happy to have a look at this. To be perfectly honest, that was news to me. So I will get a briefing from the officers. I will communicate your sense of urgency and I will get back to you.
Okay, Minas, do the supplementary on question two?
I do, Lord Mayor, thank you. Question two, trying to speak really quickly. Electric points in parks would be a game changer. It's been discussed before, specifically with reference to ice cream vans. In view of that, I mean, our lack officers have tried ever so hard to make this happen on the Bowl Hills and we were quite hopeful at one bit, but obviously we've hit a brick wall with the cost. What would councillor Williams do to ensure that electricity supply to strategic points in all of our parks is a priority within the portfolio? And would you challenge the view that there is not sufficient value to investing in low-carbon amenities in our parks? Thank you.
Richard?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I read this answer with a degree of disappointment, actually. As I explained to my colleague councillor Huggan, probably just over a year ago, when he asked a very similar question about the possibility of electric points, I thought the response from the officers at the time was much more positive. I will initially go back, talk to the officers in particular, maybe also call a meeting with the appropriate members of the lack officer side and see what we can do about this.
Like you. Minas?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and Mark Jones for the time being. And thank you councillor Williams. Just so, just to confirm, our procurement process at the moment, don't build in any, anything to encourage local artists or, you know, diverse working-class artists to bid for tenders? And is this something that the committee could look into? I think it's something we should look to encourage for our tender processes and for our procurement processes for public art installations.
Thank you very much for the question. I think it's a good question, which deserves a good answer. If you don't mind, I would reply and write in to you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Bottom of page six, page seven, page eight and nine, page 10. Willis.
Thank you for the opportunity. On my question, I was asking about sixth-form education out of area. What I really would like to know is, how many children go, choose to go out of area when they start secondary school at age 11? Many parents will be thinking, why would I send my children there? Then they've got to go somewhere else. I know lots of children at age 11 go straight to Eckington School, where there is sixth-form provision. Children go out of area at 11, not wait till they decide, oh, do I want to do sixth-form or not? And I really wanted to know whether we had those figures.
Sorry, councillor Dale.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've not got those figures on me, but if I can put them right in to you, is that okay? Thank you.
Question, sorry, page 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
Thank you. I've got a brief questions, one and two. So last year, last summer, during the heatwave, temperatures reached 40 degrees for the first time. Research from the University of Bristol showed that the heatwave led to 3,000 excess deaths for people over 65. From the answers, it seems that the housing service doesn't give consideration to the need for air conditioning or overcalling measures in housing stock, and it seems that no analysis of average temperatures in each block has been gathered, no data's been gathered. Do you think this is okay, considering the challenge the climate crisis presents and the fact that we will have escalating heatwaves as years come?
Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. It's actually a really interesting aspect of global heating that probably Sheffield City Council isn't equipped to deal with for the entire planet. But we could make a start by doing as much as we can to insulate homes. So the essence of the answer that you've received here is that the first thing is about insulating homes, because of course not only does insulation of homes keep people warmer when it's colder outside, which is usually the case in Sheffield, but it can also help to keep people cool when it's hot outside, which does occasionally happen, and of course, as you point out, will happen increasingly frequently with climate change. That is, of course, what happens in other countries where you have houses with very thick walls, et cetera. Air conditioning isn't quite the same thing, because of course that's something that requires extra heating, extra energy use to try and keep things cool. It's like running a fridge. So, yeah, it's, it might seem a simplistic situation, but the focus has got to be on insulation, and as you know, the council is doing what it can within limited budgets, and we will be, as always, pressing the council to do more, and we think frankly that it should be more of a corporate priority to put more results into retrofitting the council's own housing stock.
Thanks, Douglas. And just on the point about gathering data about temperatures, is that, has that been considered?
Yes, so on gathering temperature data, as I said, it doesn't actually happen at the moment. There is a suggestion amongst officers that some work could be done to investigate effectively a procurement of some of the services and the companies that specialise in temperature measurement. As you might remember, we had a motion to council some time ago, possibly before we were on the council, pointing out that, you know, the standard EPC measures that we use for buildings aren't always very effective. The measure of space heating is a much better indicator of how energy efficient a building is and how relevant is to the warmth and safety of people living in there, and we wanted to develop that. Obviously, that is an element that requires further resources from the council, so what we could really do with this, a backup and assistance for the council to identify resources to put more into that work, because I do think it's an important and interesting area of our tenants' wellbeing to explore. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to page 16, 17, which question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Don't, because you're having more than your share here, so be brief.
Very quickly then, I'll ask them both together. Question four, it's helpful to see the EPC data that doesn't necessarily, that isn't necessarily analysis about the retrofitting needs across housing tenure. I would have hoped with the decarbonisation route maps, we would have a bit more specific, and this is a challenge to the housing service, I guess, we would have a bit more specific data about the wider needs for retrofitting, not just, you know, do we have ambitions to move everything, those, you know, 60,000 houses that are EPC, ENF, for example, to see what targets are we setting, what is the need. Question five as well, very quickly, I cross it over to the next page. I think it would be helpful to, obviously you said, we don't have any analysis of the £12 million we've secured previously through government grants, how many green jobs that's created, and how many skills that's delivered. I think we really need to focus government grants that we receive to make sure they're delivering the most for our local economy, they're delivering skills through our local providers, and I think we need to lock that down a bit more. I am going to suggest through EDS, we have a task and finish group for this, and I hope you will work with us through housing on that to tackle our skills gap and pressure down our housing.
Douglas, there's two questions in there.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, as always, it's easy for all of us to suggest that more people do more work to better effect. As always, it's a case of resources. There is work going on in the housing service to look at all these issues. We could do with more secure funding so we can resource that properly. There may be some advantage, I think it's those committees to decide, a bit more of a think about how we want to take this further forward. But as you probably know, I would very warmly welcome support for more green jobs in here, and of course, one of the things we've been trying to promote is the whole idea of energy sprung, which is a fundamental approach to refitting our housing stock at scale right across the region ideally, with Sheffield becoming a driver of retrofitting and incorporating a new source of green jobs in that. So, yeah, you can help with that, thanks.
Question seven, page 17. Shafat.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, my question to councillor Johnson is about these EPC kind of checks, and then there's only, was it about 12,000 properties, you say, the whole council? I think, given that the majority of properties in Sheffield aren't council-owned, can we seriously look at how we can help? Many of those people who are going to be in fewer poverty are often in private rented, whether they've got these certificates, and if they haven't, how do we help them get there? The other thing, yeah, I'll leave it at that, but then I think next time you answer questions from Mr Parek, that reminded him of Randi's council since 2011, you know, a lot of things need to happen now, you know, in the last two years, where were they in the last...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, most men. Not entirely sure what the question is, but yeah, more assistance for the private sector to improve housing, absolutely. It should be a priority for this council to put resources into where it possibly can. It might be something that Greens have said before.
You're on page 18, page 19. Sophie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So when I first came in...
Which question?
A question of one, please. When I first came in to the council chamber as a campaigner rather than a councillor, when we first found out about the crisis in housing disrepair, and the waiting times around then in 2020 was around 60 days, and since then we've made improvements, and we've gone forwards and we've gone backwards, but I'm wondering, councillor Johnson, under your chairship, how are we back now to square one?
Not sure we are back to square one, to be fair. The staff that we have in the repairs and maintenance service have been pretty well on the ball. It's quite easy to underestimate the amount of work that goes into repairing council housing. Admittedly, it is a big drain on our resources, but we are, we do have a housing stock that's had under-investment, as has been discussed earlier on in the sense of RAC, for many decades. So, yeah, that's where we are.
Still on page 19.
Question 12, please, Lord Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, as you're saying about how it paints an improving picture, and you're saying how you're not sure that we are actually back to square one, so is basically 68 days, nearly two months waiting for housing to repair, is that an improving picture to you personally, councillor Johnson?
So the difficulty with putting averages is that the average masks what's really going on the ground, and there are actually quite important discussions, very useful housing briefing this week, where members of all parties, you know, were discussing the issue about how to prioritise and triage housing repairs. As always, it's an ongoing piece of work. We do, of course, employ some people who are, you know, very thoughtful and quite skilled at arranging the repairs in council housing as best we can within the resources we've got.
Lord Mayor, I don't believe councillor Johnson has actually answered my question.
In the time-honoured manner of other Lord Mayors, it might not be the answer you wanted, but it's the answer you've got. Question three, no? Question, page 20, 21, 22. Which question on page 22? Okay, go ahead.
Well, the answer is on page 23, councillor Miskill. You say that you're going to carry out a review and the experimental order is going to be up to 18 months. I just want to gauge from you, at what point are you willing to actually review it? Will you wait till the 18 months maximum, or will you bring forward the review? And if so, when?
Lord Mayor, can I have some clarity on the question that's been asked there? I think councillor Mohammed was referencing question two, but question two relates to the Arundel Gate bus, Arundel Gate Bus Gate?
Yes, sorry, okay, Arundel Gate Bus Gate. Let me just get my glasses on, I'm struggling to read. If you go on page 23, Lord Mayor, the very last paragraph, councillor Miskill, you say that the traffic regulation order is experimental and it can last up to 18 months. The question to you is, are you intending to wait the entire 18 months, or is it a possibility of bringing forward the review, given some of the concerns you've highlighted yourself about the view and stuff? And if so, at what point are you likely to bring that forward?
Okay, I think the question's clear now, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Mohammed for the question. You also raised an interesting point about signage. I am assured that the statutory signage does meet the legal requirement, but I have, as you correctly pointed out, asked officers to investigate the signage that goes above and beyond the statutory minimum, because I've been out and had a look at it myself, and it does seem to be slightly obscured as well. With regard to the particular question about the experimental traffic regulation order, because of the technical nature of that, I would like to get back to you formally in writing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've run out of time for the half-hour members' questions, but that means we've just got time for the proposal and second of the first notice of motion. So this is item nine on the agenda. Notice of motion regarding national policies to tackle child poverty, maximum, well, maximum of five minutes for this, councillor Shafat Mohammed to move to speak up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for allowing us to actually at least be able to propose this motion, and I hope colleagues across the chamber will be able to support us in terms of issues that our young people face, and as I'd like to declare an interest as someone that, you know, lives in a poor part of the city. Actually, when I was at school, in junior school in particular, and secondary, was, did receive not only free school meals, Lord Mayor, but at the time you got free clothing at Leopold Street, and it's something that's quite important to me, as someone who works with our young cities, young people, that we have to support them. I know child poverty has been decreasing, it's been decreasing, if you look at Joseph Randri's research since, since the 90s. It started to slow down in the 2000s, and similarly, it slowed down further in the early 2010 onwards, but actually recently it's gone up. So there's a couple of policies that national governments have introduced, including capping child benefit, but also not rolling out primary school free school meals. And here, you won't see this often, but I want to commend Sadiq Khan, the mayor of London, for what he's done, and what I want Labour colleagues to do, and Green colleagues, and independents, is to actually support and say Sheffield will also like to do that. And actually, because we're close to a general election at some point sometime, not only should we ask this government, but we, City ought to make it loud and clear for our debate today, or at least my submissions, that any future government should also look at prioritising and abolishing the two-child cap on allowance, but also look at rolling out the free school meals for primary school because the kitchens are already in. You know, I benefited when I was a child of actually hot meals being made at the school, since the junior school and infant school, they had kitchens, and all my children then ended up having meals that were shipped in, but we now got kitchens in quite a lot of our schools, let's take benefit of that. Lord Mayor, given the time, I'm going to close it here because councillor Masters has got some good points to raise.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Masters, the second of motion, two minutes you have.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations first to councillors Horner and Unna on their maiden speeches. We all know there is a cost of living crisis and that children suffer most from it. The life chances of those brought up in poverty are significantly reduced. A child constantly hungry cannot take full advantage of the route out of poverty education offers. Feeding that child gives them a chance to flourish. We had thought it self-evident that all parties presented, present here recognise that malnutrition is a scourge, that we should collectively focus on ways to alleviate it, that we should put the needs of children first. Instead, we have the usual display of political posturing and blame. In this crisis, how can Labour members justify an amendment which focuses on self-aggrandizement instead of alleviating child poverty? I will repeat three simple measures which we've identified, because I cannot believe you all read our notice of motion. We want this and any future government of any persuasion to abolish the two-child cap on benefits, expand free school meals to every child in primary school and every child in secondary school whose family received universal credit, increase funding for free school meals in line with inflation, backdated to match the real terms level of funding in 2014-15. The Labour London mayor recognises the value of giving all primary school children a balanced nutritious meal and providing them free. Surely, this is something Labour councils also want for our young people? Children eating together, no stigma, good for social cohesion. Sadiq Khan's decision to make, makes kitchens brought back into schools, thanks to the numbers nationally in the past, more sustainable. Is he too radical for members opposite? I am appalled at your introspection. I commend our motion, and ask for the parties to oppose, to support it.
Thank you. That brings us to the guillotine, so now we'll formally move the amendments and other notice of motion. So I'm calling upon councillor Dale to formally move amendment.
Formally move, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Bascharak.
Formally move the amendment.
Okay, thank you. And the second amendment, number two, councillor Johnson. Formally, Lord Mayor. And second that, councillor Elliot.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So now we have to move to vote on the first amendment, which is moved by councillor Dale. Are there any, is there any voting in parts on this? No. Is amendment one agreed, or is there any dissent? Dissent, therefore we'll move to electronic voting. This is the Labour amendment, remember everyone, same procedure as before, you got good at it eventually. We'll just give a minute or two more. We know some people have left, but we think we're down to 68. We've got 67 registered to vote. We've got 68 now, and there is 68 in the room. There's one to vote. Have you voted on the Labour amendments? Two people have come back in. I've given you a few seconds to register a vote. This is the Labour amendment on the first notice of motion. Okay, that, I'm now closing the vote on that. Right, yeah. So, 431 against 38, one abstention, so that amendment is lost. We now move to the second amendment, which is the Green amendment. Is there any voting in parts on that? No. Is that agreed, or is there any dissent? Dissent, move to electronic voting. Two people, one person. That's it. Seems everybody's 70, same numbers before. So, 41 in favour, 28 against, one abstention, that amendment is carried. So, we now move to the vote on the substantive motion as amended by that last Green amendment. Can we clear the screen from that, please? So, on the substantive, is there any voting in parts? Yes. Okay, can we have the voting in parts from the left route then?
Lord Mayor, in voting for the substantive motion, we are voting against D and abstaining on the original C and E.
Okay. And from the Lib Dem.
The Green amendments, but for the rest. I don't know if this counts as sufficiently non-desent for us to take all these votes as they've been given, or do we all have to press four on the machines? That's up to you.
Well, certainly yours is four. I think yours is more four than against, Green will be four. So, it looks like you're all voting for. Do we need to do it electronically, or?
We can't generate.
All right, so, no, sorry, we have to do it electronically, so we know which bits are going to be missed out. So, electronically, please vote. Yeah, the reason for that is it helps democratic services to work out which groups have voted for which parts and things, so. Well, I decided today, it's getting so complex, just staying in on everything, because I haven't got the voting yet, if you mind. Okay, that's it. That is passed, but we'll work out which bits have passed later on. Let us now move on to item 10 on the agenda, the notice of motion regarding quicker, safer, affordable journeys. Councillor Miskill, could you formally propose this?
Formally proposed, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Gamble-Pew.
Formally seconded.
Thank you. Amendment, which will be number three, councillor Sangha.
I formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Auckland.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Right, the next amendment, number four, councillor Little.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Turpin.
Formally seconded.
Okay, thank you. So, now we move on to the vote on the amendment, which is the Liberal Democrat amendment. Is there any dissent or voting? Well, there's voting in parts, is there? Okay. Lots of voting in parts. Councillor Turpin.
In voting against this amendment, we'll be voting for part five.
In voting against this amendment, we are for one, and for I, and five.
Okay, got that right, so. Oh, Sophie.
Voting against, but voting for, four and five.
Sorry, can you put your mic on, so we're sure we've got it properly?
Sorry. Voting against, but voting for, four and five.
Okay, right. Let's do the electronic bit then. One to vote. That's 70, okay. That is lost, but some bits are carried, and so it's carried in part, parts one, four, one, and five are carried, the remainder is lost. I hope that was clear, it will be in the minutes. Okay, thank you. So, that now means we move on to item, is this number 11?
No.
No, hang on. Oh, sorry. Amendment four. Any voting in parts on this? Sophie, Sophie then, Ruth.
Yes, I'm confused about which bits of the amendments passed, but voting for, but against.
Hang on, we're just talking about amendment, the Green amendment at the moment. It was me that got too far ahead of myself to confuse people.
Come back in a minute.
Right. So, on the Green amendment, Ruth, you're voting in parts?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting against, we are for two F and G.
The Lib Dems, no voting in parts? Okay. You are voting in parts now.
Yes, sorry, I was, I just lost my paper. Against, but for one and two.
Okay, right, let's go for the electronic votes. Waiting, and there's one person registered vote, not voted, but it's clearly lost this, except, but part two, part two is carried. Okay, so we now move to the substantive motion with the amended bits, and if you are following that, you'll know which bits have got through. So, we're now going to the vote on the substantive motion as amended. Is there any voting in parts, councillor Turpin?
Thank you. Yeah, in voting for the substantive motion, we'll be voting against part A and any of the other bits that we voted against in the amendments that got through. Because you're guessing as good as mine, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, you're getting up to speed with this whips business, aren't you? Sophie.
Similar, I'm a bit confused which is staying in and which is not, but for the motion, but against the original E, F, and J, four.
Yeah, we'll try and ensure that the bits you voted against before, you vote against this time. Okay. Ruth.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not confused, because I'm the class swap and I did my homework before, and anticipated every possible outcome. In voting for, we are against the part three and four J of the Liberal Democrat amendment.
Okay, so, oh, Joe, right, here we go.
Lord Mayor, thank you. I don't think we got four J of the Liberal Democrat amendment, but if we did, then we're still voting for it. We are voting for, but in voting for, we are against the original E and F that we voted against, that we tried to amend, and against the part of the Green amendment that we voted against last time. So, we're voting the same way as we did on all the amendments.
And I understand, Ruth, that J didn't get through anyway, I think, so we're ready to vote.
I swear on my words, Lord Mayor.
Yeah. Redo your homework. One person to vote, I think, two people to vote, one person to vote, but clearly this has been passed, but minus some fiddly bits, that will be sorted out later. Okay? Still one person to vote, last chance? No, okay, closing the vote on that. Right, let's move on to item number 11, notice of motion regarding protecting our social housing stock. Right, Penny Baker.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Mohammed Marouf.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Two proposed amendments. Amendment number five, Nabilah.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And Mark.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Amendment number six, Douglas.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Brian.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now we move to the vote on the first amendment, which is the Labour amendment. Is there any voting in parts? Joe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting against, we'll be voting for E.
Okay, Sophie.
Same, voting against, voting for five E.
Okay, can we commence the vote on that, please? Okay, that has been passed, 43 for, 26 against, one abstention. Okay, we now move on to the vote on the second amendment. Are there any voting in parts on this? No? Any dissension?
Dissent.
Dissent, okay, we then move to voting electronically on this. Three people to vote. Go on, not many more to do, concentrate, three to go.
I have voted.
You'll know you haven't voted if all your lights are lit up at the bottom of your screen, so there's two people, must have all their colours lit. Okay, I'm giving up at that stage. 11 for, 27 against, 30 abstentions, so that amendment is lost. We now move on to the vote on the substantive motion as amended. Is there any voting in parts on this? Joe, then Ruth.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In the substantive, we're going to vote against the Labour text that we voted against the first time, in voting for overall.
Ruth.
We're voting for the substantive motion, but abstaining on E.
Okay, is that all? Just for clarity, new paragraphy or old paragraphy? You mean E that was in the original notice of motion? Yeah, okay, that's cleared it up. Okay, can we go to the vote on this then, please? Oh, sorry.
Same as Labour, they're voting against the original E.
So, for but against E. Yeah, okay. Just got 66 registered at the moment, should be 70, I think. 67, three people nodded off. I've woken them up, we're up to 69 now. I don't know who's asleep, but we'll call that it. 68 in. Sixty-eight in favour, nothing against, one abstention, so that is carried apart from the bits that were, that are in there, I'll reveal later. Oh, we think everything is carried on the substantive, okay. Right, item of business number twelve, notice of motion regarding a fairer green economy for Sheffield and formerly Minas to move this one.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formerly moved with C four, has a slight typo, could it be advanced manufacturing, not advancing manufacturing?
Well, I hope the manufacturing part, if it is advancing, is advancing from Rotherham into Sheffield, yeah. Okay. And seconded by, I think it's Ruth seconded it, yeah.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Okay, one amendment on this one, Martin.
Yes, Lord Mayor, sorry.
And Robert.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
We now go to the vote on the amendment, which is the Lib Dem amendment, any voting in parts on that? Ruth.
We are voting for but against six and seven, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Nothing else. All right, can we go to the vote on the amendment then, please? Okay, actually, that's it this time, so we've got fifty-nine in favour, nobody against, eleven abstentions, so that is carried apart from the bit, oh, no. Oh, it'll be carried, it's all carried actually, yeah, it's all carried. I'm glad I've got Paul keeping prompt. Oh, hang on. Oh, so, no, six and seven will be lost actually. Yeah, because I, I think the Greens abstained, Labour have got more votes than the Liberal Democrats, so, yeah. I think, I think that's right. It's a long, long day and a very hot day, so that's the last notice of motion, but we've still got a couple of items of business.
Substantive, Lord Mayor.
No, oh, the substantive. Right, okay, can we move to the vote on the substantive? And with any voting in parts, Joe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The two parts that we tried to delete and amend, C seven and D two, we're going to vote against again, otherwise voting for.
Ruth.
Just felt embraces, Lord Mayor, just in case, voting for, but just in case they did get through, still against Lib Dem six and seven, if they did pass.
So, we're voting for the substantive.
Yeah. Okay, can we move to the vote, electronically voting, please? One to vote. Two to vote. Still one to vote, just look at the bottom of your screen, if green, red and yellow are all lit up, you haven't voted. Okay, well, that's fairly clear cut, fifty-nine in favour, nothing against, ten abstentions, so that is carried with possibly some bits, yeah. Well, I think it's all, I'm advised it's all carried, but read the minutes of the next council meeting and you can find out. Okay, has that, apologies for rushing ahead and missing that vote, but we've now finished the voting on the notice of motion. Yes. So, we're moving to item thirteen, minutes of the previous council meeting. Is this formally moved?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Formally seconded.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Is that agreed? Agreed, that motion is carried. Now, item business number fourteen, membership of the council bodies. Councillor Richards.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Otten.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
And I think that's in the paper in front of us, is that all agreed? Thank you, so that is passed. And that, I believe, concludes today's business. Thank you. And final reminder, final reminder, if anybody wants to join me week on Friday, or we've all gone high-tech, you can scan in donations on, on that as well, I'd be very pleased.
Can I, can I just say, it's been a really hard meeting and I'd like to thank you, Colin. I was very glad it wasn't me today, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we all deserve a very long, cool drink at the end of this, but thank you, safe journey home, bye.